Okay, we are ready.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, good morning, everyone. Thank you for your patience. I now call to order the meeting of the Governing Board of the Davis Joint Unified School District. Please note that consistent with shelter in place orders from the Governor and Yolo County, this meeting is compliant with the Governor's Executive Order N-29-20, which allows for deviation of teleconference rules required by the Brown Act. No in-person attendance will be permitted. Please email public comment to BOE@DJUSD.net and staff will read those aloud during the proper agenda item. Okay, so we're going to start with our patriotic observance. For those that are on the panel, please mute your mics and I will lead us. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Okay, we will move now to roll call. Trustees Adams, Asmanson, Dara, Hyder, and Denunzio are all present. We will move to announcement of any decisions made in closed session. The board made no reportable decisions during our closed session. Okay, trustees now move to approval of the agenda. It is before you, may I have a motion to approve it, please?
I'll move, trustee Dara.
Moved by trustee Dara, do I have a second?
I'll second. Trustee Adams.
Trustee Adams, second, okay, we will do a roll call, vote, trustee Adams.
Aye.
Trustee Asmanson.
Aye.
Trustee Dara.
Aye.
Trustee Hyder.
Aye.
I vote aye as well. It is five in favor, none opposed, and none abstaining. So now we'll move on to overall public comment. So as noted previously, in-person attendance unfortunately at the board meeting will not be permitted. Comments should be emailed to BOE@DJUSD.net. A special meeting shall provide an opportunity for members of the public to directly address the legislative body concerning any item that has been described in the notice for the meeting before or during consideration of that item. So there will be given that, there'll be no public comment in general. There is public comment for specific agenda items and we will read those public comment when those agenda items come up. Okay, so we're going to move now on to presentation, discussion, and action. And our first item of the morning, it is still morning, right? Yes, okay, good. It's Board Bylaw 9323, meeting conduct. And I'm going to ask Superintendent John Bose to please take over.
Thank you, President Denunzio. Our robust discussion about steps to return to campus at our January 7th board meeting precluded the time needed to address the important role of public comment for our community during our Board of Education meetings. So we picked this topic up again this morning and this agenda item provides the board an opportunity to discuss how it would like to receive public comment during virtual board meetings. We all look forward to a time when we can again hold Board of Education meetings in person just across the street at city chambers. And an important part of DJUSD Board of Education meetings is being able to hear from the community about matters of interest. With us this evening is attorney E. Fickner from the law firm of Atkinson-Andelson, who assists us with any legal or policy matters, which is the item before us tonight. Public Information Officer Maria Clayton will provide options for consideration. So let's begin with an update from Maria about how we currently receive public comment and options available for us for future meetings. E. Fickner can then take any questions about Board bylaw considerations as we explore this important topic. Let me now turn this over to Public Information Officer Maria Clayton.
Thank you Superintendent Bose and good morning trustees. Let me provide you with a brief overview of our current practice as well as some other options that you might contemplate in this discussion today. To begin, and what we're calling option one is our current practice. While we are holding virtual Board of Education meetings, public comment is currently emailed to the board through their Board of Education email BOE@DJUSD.net and labeled as public comment. Those emails are organized and sorted by agenda item and then read aloud by staff in the order that they arrive. We followed guidance from the board on how long the public comment period should last and that has varied meeting to meeting, but with a mostly consistent three-minute limit per comment. The status quo practice allows us to, sorry, for regular meetings to schedule Zoom meetings that can be broadcasted by media services through live stream and cable channel 17. Our second option for consideration, emails become the order for live audio or audiovisual webinar comments. In this option, emailed comments sent to the board can be organized by staff or a Board of Education member and then using a Zoom webinar format like the format that we are using today would allow an attendee, so those of you today on the board and staff are part of a panel, the attendees are watching live by joining a Zoom link. This would allow an attendee to either provide an audio comment live during the meeting for three minutes or the attendee could be allowed to join the panel to where they could then turn on their camera and provide live video slash audio comments before being returned back to the audience or as an attendee. Again, this option would require a Zoom webinar format like the one we are using today in the special meeting. A third option is a raised hand function, which provides the queue for either a live audio or an audiovisual comment again during a Zoom webinar. This is a slight variation on the previous option I just described, but instead of emailing in advance, this scenario would allow an attendee to use the raise hand function during the webinar. And based on who was called on by the president or designated by the president, and the staff would then facilitate allowing that attendee to talk, turn on their mic and talk for three minutes of live audio for public comment. In that case, there would be no video component of that public comment. A variation of the same option would again allow the attendee to join the panel briefly to provide public comment and turn on their camera and provide audio and visual comment if that is the preference. A fourth option is audio recording of public comment left on a voicemail and played back during a Zoom meeting. This option is what is used by our counterparts at the City of Davis. In this option, public comment is left on a telephone voicemail line prior to the board meeting. Voicemails are then turned into audio files and sent to the Board of Education email box. The files are reviewed by staff or a Board of Education member organized and the audio file is played back during the live Zoom meeting. Okay. Option five, callback for live audio public comment during a Zoom meeting. In this final option for consideration, a member of the public would send an email to the Board of Education address to request to make public comment on a topic. These emails would be organized by agenda item in order and during the live meeting, a trustee or staff member would call each person back at a designated phone number during the meeting and the individual would provide live audio comment over speakerphone for the designated three minutes. That is a quick overview of the possible options. Other issues the board might want to keep in mind as part of your discussion this morning are the topics of live comment versus the ability to review comments in advance or even after a meeting, the pros and cons to audio only versus audiovisual comment, timing and sorting, for example, do you want to continue with comments presented with specific agenda items, which would require some sort of advanced review of those comments or would it be okay for the comments to occur all at one time during an agenda or during the agenda? And lastly, how if at all, do you want to prioritize the comments in during the agenda item? And with that, I will turn it back to Superintendent Bose.
John, you're on mute.
Very sorry about that. Thank you, Maria. Trustees, Public Information Officer Maria Clayton and Legal Counsel E. Fickner are available to answer questions about the different scenarios described and any questions in our bylaw about the purpose, role, or any particulars on public comment itself. And let me turn it back over to President Denunzio.
Thank you Superintendent Bose. And thank you for our Public Information Officer, Ms. Clayton, for that overview. So we're going to go to our student trustees first for any questions or comments they have. And trustees obviously have questions for staff or for our legal counsel or any comments you have or preferences you have, we'd be glad to hear those. So Mr. Lee, why don't we start with the comments and questions from you, please?
I don't have any at this time.
Okay. Thank you very much, Mr. Lee. Ms. Ortega Nunez, any comments or questions from you?
I don't have any either, thank you.
Okay, great, thank you. All right, then we will move to our trustees and we'll, we start in reverse alphabetical order. We'll start with trustee Hyder. Questions or comments for staff or our legal representation, Ms. Fickner?
Thank you. So I guess I'm just not sure how. My, I guess the main question I have is the, is option three, the raised hand option, the most similar to in-person public comment from the options available?
Do you want me to take that Superintendent Bose? So and I think either the, the raised hand option or the number two, where someone would email in advance just to let you know that there needed to be a live comment. Either way, the actual comment itself would come from the individual in the moment and you would either choose to have them remain an attendee and only hear their voice by turning on their mic or you could choose to actually from what's called promoting them into the panel and that would give them the option to turn on the camera as well and you could see and hear them. In either case, that is sort of live, what you would be the closest to live public comment where you could see and hear potentially. It just is a matter of how you learn that they would like a public comment.
So in a live, if we were all meeting together in a live public comment, they would it's kind of self, it's kind of like come to the mic, like you come to them, it's more free flowing, like you come to the mic or if there's more than one person, there's a line to come up to the mic, is that right?
In, in real time, in non-COVID-19 times, there are blue cards at the back of the chamber and an individual will fill out a blue card, indicate what agenda topic or topic in general they would like to speak on, it goes up to the board and the Board President or designee sorts the cards appropriately and then calls people to the mic.
I see, okay. So is that, is anything similar to that? Is, is option two or option, maybe it's self-evident, but are, is there option two or option three more similar to that process?
They are similar in a degree. Just as we, you know, have all become more expert and learning every day about how to navigate in a virtual environment and, you know, just all the benefits, but all the difficulties that also come along with that. The raising hands may provide for a little more disorder than option two and that option two, similar to the way we organize now, we can see very clearly in advance and in lifetime who wishes to provide public comment.
That's all I have, thank you.
Thank you trustee Hyder, trustee Dara.
Thank you. Um, so is there, first of all, if we were to do option four, would it be the time limit, like the three-minute comment, or if we needed to change the timeline for any reason, just post what the timeline would be, would that be how we would do those recordings?
And could we go back to the five options and option four is audio recording of a public comment left on voicemail and played back during the Zoom meeting?
So the city currently uses this and what they do is they just cut the public comment off at three minutes. So if the individual has left a voicemail, that's much longer than that, it just plays up to three minutes and turns off. That's my understanding.
Because I'm wondering if there's a way to sort of combine or merge option two and option four so that we could get emails to get in order, but if people would like to have their own voice in the audio to say their message, so as it said, their speed, their cadence, and their intention. I wonder if that's realistic. Understanding though that there has to be some way to either sort these or like you said, then it sounds like we would just play them all and that might be just disorganized if one public comment is on item five and one public comment is on item eight. It may not be clear if the context of the call isn't clear, so I'm trying to understand, can it be disaggregated by item number?
Well, and we've seen that difficulty just in lifetime in our own virtual meetings. You know, staff does their best to sort out which agenda item a comment belongs to. But unlike a real meeting, we have to make more guesses. At the same time, even in real meetings, regular enough occurrence is someone coming to the mic and saying, hey, I think I should have spoken at an earlier item, right? Because they didn't understand, you know, the rules and that's understandable, you know?
Sure, sure. Thank you, those are my questions, thank you.
Thank you trustee Dara, trustee Asmanson.
Yeah, I think I want to start by just saying how much I appreciate all the written comments that we get in terms of my processing, it's so nice to be able to click on the links and read the reports and the articles that people have sent. And I know that we all spend a lot of time reading all of those for each of us and processing those. And so that might be sort of a separate issue to the, to the public comment issue that we're looking at right now, but I want to really make it clear how important those are and how that processing time in, in the written form is also really beneficial. And I, you, you mentioned that option four is the most like the city option. Do we have any pros and cons since the city has been doing that, that, that we should share?
Sure, we do know it's a format they've been using for a while after a couple of unfortunate circumstances early on at attempts for audiovisual. It is a very labor-intensive. If we were to use option four, we would need additional staff allocation to be able to spend the physical time, you know, listening to, you know, just imagine in our last meetings, we've had, you know, 38, 40 public comments coming in. That is 120 minutes worth of voicemail that somebody has to listen to in advance and then spend the time organizing. If they need to get back to someone because the message was garbled or it wasn't clear what item it goes to, so we would need more staff, more staff time to be able to achieve number four.
Can I just add one other clarification of the city? So the city also has it set up, so an individual is checking it in real time all the way up until that agenda item comes up in the board meeting. So they start that comment period for that item the day of the meeting and allow it to happen all the way till the time of the agenda item. Versus, you know, we take public comment at any point during the week, right, or even earlier that someone says they want to create public, send a public comment. So that is a different nuance as well and it would obviously board preference, but I just wanted to make that clarification.
Yeah, that is really helpful because I think there is something to be said for consistency across, you know, these are the same citizens that are potentially putting in comments to different organizations here. And do any of them impact our ability to stream the way that we currently are? You mentioned some of them require like a webinar or a different sort of format.
They do require different formats. They would both be able to be streamed and put on cable as long as it was during a regular meeting time. So the reason today we are in webinar format is because we do not have access to media services. Same with our special meeting on Tuesday, we will need to have a webinar format because we can't access media services. There's a city council meeting happening at that time, so. But that doesn't mean on a regular board meeting, if we were in this format, we couldn't also have media services join and broadcast it. Does that answer your question? Okay.
Yeah, that's exactly it, thank you. Those are all, those are all my questions.
Thank you trustee Asmanson, trustee Adams.
Yeah, well, good morning and I'm just wondering, can you explain to me a little bit more about how option five works?
Sure, and this came from a different district as an example to us and my understanding is that there is someone who sends a, an email that says, I would like to make a public comment on this item and this is my phone number. And in the real time of the meeting, a staff member or a board member as you would, would choose, would call that number back and say you're live and put the speakerphone up to the mic and you would hear a public audio comment via speakerphone from the person in live time.
So that, and I think this is what the State Board of Education does. They just say, if you're going to comment, just email us. And then people get on there live and they at this state board level, it's only one minute, but we would have a three-minute limit, right? And then, so in this sense, no one has to really send their comments ahead of us. They just have to say, hey, I think I want to comment on this item. And how soon in advance do we have to get that email?
So we would need to discuss that. The district, we learned about, does all of their public comment at the beginning of the meeting for all public, for all agenda items, different than our format where we take public comment essentially item by item. Right? So we, we could make that determination. The other thing I learned was that there is a little bit of, you know, lag time from comment to comment. After the hangup, you know, they have to dial, wait for the person to pick up, make sure they're situated. So there's a little bit of a, a longer meeting with that format.
Yeah, I think though with every option, there's a plus and a minus, right? Right, we require more staff time or, you know, and I, I want to go back to trustee Hyder's comment, you know, of these, which of them best simulates what would happen in an in-person meeting? And to me, just that ability to say, I, I want to make a comment and then get in the queue seems to be best. If we could do something like five that could be organized around the different items, to me, sounds more worthwhile. I also think I, I tend to be more pro-audio than audiovisual just because audiovisual is usually technically more difficult to handle. So, and shall we say, audio, live audio is subject to less nefarious actions such as what happened with city council in their early endeavors on this. But, yeah, go ahead.
So I was just going to make one point of clarification. So the, the difference between option two and option five is whether the individual has to join the meeting, right? The, the advantage of option five is the staff or trustees would call out to the person who's indicated they want to comment. Number two would be the same thing, they've already indicated they want to comment, but they actually are sitting on that Zoom link and they just have their mic turned on by staff in real time. So you don't have to worry about having to make the call and having them pick up and make sure that they're ready. So I just wanted to point that out that they're similar, but it just, it, it, it makes the individual join the call or join the meeting in order to participate.
Right, okay, that's good to know. So really in terms of managing and preventing the lag between comments, it's, it's, it's an easier management number two.
I would, I would think so.
Yeah, okay, that's good to know, that's good to know. All right, thanks. That's all I have.
Thank you trustee Adams. Before I go to questions for Ms. Clayton, Ms. Fickner, is there any guidance, you know, legal concerns we have to be for these options as you've heard them? I mean, obviously we have to get into the specific discussions of what we want to do, but any concerns about one of the options, you know, potentially being an issue relative to any legal requirements? You know, obviously we've all reread the Board bylaw about meetings and public comment. Any, any, anything we should be watching out for here?
No, I don't see any legal concerns with any of these five options. You have, as you've heard, practical concerns and sometimes those practical concerns could lead to a legal problem. So for example, if you are having so many comments that go beyond the overall time, then the question is if you're going to prioritize the comments, that's when you can get into some legal trouble in that we want to make sure we are not prioritizing what we want to hear versus what the public wants to say. So other than that, I don't see any legal issues with the, the options presented to you.
Okay, great, thank you. So I, just a, a couple of comments and a couple of questions. Um, one comment, I had the, I don't know, I guess the fortune slash misfortune to be on that apocryphal city council meeting many, many months ago. And now unfortunately, you know, Zoom bombing was a big thing on a while ago. We've all put things in place to try to slow it down, but you know, it was, it was pretty bad. I mean, some of it was just some sophomore. Some of it was obstreperous, but some of it was, you know, downright offensive candidly. And, you know, what's the phrase, you know, this is why we can't have nice things. I mean, obviously we'd prefer to have an open dialogue, we'd prefer to have something, well, we prefer to be in chambers, but we certainly prefer to have an open dialogue with the community. But I do think that we need to recognize that the anonymity of, you know, of dialing in, you know, creates some incentive for bad actors to act badly. So I do want us to be careful about that, that whatever we do, we put into place right now, what we have in place is, you know, is, is safe in that sense. And then we do put in place, you know, if we're opening ourselves up, that we have a process if someone starts, you know, saying things that really are, you know, beyond the pale, that we have the ability to control that. I think it's going to be really important for us to do. So the city council right now allows email comments prior to the board meeting. And I think that's their meetings start 6:30, right? And so typically, I think five o'clock, excuse me, is their, is their deadline for emails, is, is that right, Ms. Clayton?
So that is different information than I had been told and I apologize if I don't have the exact information. I was, it was explained to me that they had voice, a voice line for their public comment and that voice line got sent to the email of the city council.
Yeah, and I think that's, you know, if you want to leave a voice, that's the way to do it. But you can also prior send a, send an email. I don't know that they read the emails.
That might be the difference.
Yeah, but I think one of the things it's important for the community to know is, you know, obviously we've, we get a lot of public comments, but we get quite a few comments from the community that are not for public comment. The community wants to educate us, share research, share a point of view and they don't necessarily, you know, want it to be public comment. And, you know, I, I know I find reading those emails very helpful ahead of the meeting. And I suspect some of what city council is doing is getting emails ahead of time, being able to read and, and think about it. So there is some benefit to having some of that communication ahead of time as opposed to, you know, just in the, in the room. So I wonder if we would consider, you know, the potential of, of both of allowing people who don't want to be on audio but still want to email in a public comment. I know that adds complexity. but still want to email in a public comment. I know that adds complexity, right? If we're, you know, offering, you know, both alternatives. So, you know, there's a, so I think the question before us colleagues is, you know, whether we want to kind of stay with the status quo or move to something that is, you know, one of these four options or, you know, certainly we can propose a different one. Before we go to that dialogue and in a moment of irony, I need to call for public comment on this issue, which I failed to do at the beginning of the discussion. Is there any public comment on this agenda item?
There is no public comment on this agenda item.
Okay. So irony without consequence. All right. Good. So colleagues, additional discussion and student trustees, you should feel free to join this conversation as well, please. Additional questions, consideration points of view you want to share? Obviously, if someone's prepared for a motion, obviously always glad to hear that as well. Oh, sorry. Yes.
Sure. Wasn't sure what your process was.
Yeah.
Sure. So I have been reached out to by community members regarding our current method of public comment with some amount of dissatisfaction. And I have been referred to how the city does their public comment. And they feel that the current method is a bit stilted. It doesn't really feel like it has the flavor of the, the person who's sending it. And also concerns about prioritizing even the student voice over community members or vice versa. I've heard that also as a concern. So while I agree it's important to have student voice, I heard the concern of the constituents who said they felt like students shouldn't be prioritized over community members or parents because they all have different needs and points of view and perspectives on this issue. So I, I feel myself leaning towards option two offering. I appreciated the number of emails we've received and the opportunity to read them and to give some deliberative thought to the messages that we received has been very helpful for me. It allows me also to stop midway and think about something and continue, which is much harder in a, in a public comment. So I lean towards option two. And if there was some way in which people could have recordings, like a voicemail of their, of their comment, if they couldn't in fact be live, because to be quite honest, some of our meetings have gone quite late. And depending on people's availability, not all of them have maybe the duration, I don't know, the ability to wait out the time. So, so those are some of the things that I'm, I'm thinking on and are influencing my will to make sure we have public voice in this decision-making process.
Okay, trustee, just a point of clarification. So option two, but it sounded like you were talking about also having some of the elements of option four, of being able to have an audio recording as well?
Correct.
Okay. Great. Thank you.
Can I ask a question? So when we were talking about the status quo, the, with option two, we could still have status quo, correct? I mean, people could send in emails not for public comment? Or am I misunderstanding that? We would still receive emails not for public comment and be able to process those prior to meeting that. So, so I guess what I'm asking is, do you, do you, do you indicate on the email whether, like we do now, whether it's public comment or not? And then if, well, let me just stop there. Somebody help me with one or two.
John, you're unmuted.
Let's go back to trustee Hyder's original comment about how might we best mimic the original meeting? So in a blue card scenario, in an in-person meeting, citizen or student with community member fills out a card, passes it to Monica or Roque or a small cabinet member, brings it up to a board member. They all make their way to the board president who organizes them. We don't know in advance what the person is going to say. It's a surprise when they, most of the time when they come to the podium, sometimes we'll get an email in advance saying, here's what I'm going to read. So it may be the case that if people, you know, email to say, I'd like to make a public comment, that may be all they email, or maybe that's all we want them to email so they can say what they wish, you know, at the podium, a point to consider. Two legal questions for Eve. I think just based on the discussion so far. One, could we hear about organizing the queue for an agenda item? And then second, this notion of preference or not from a legal perspective, you know, there have been some board meetings where we've had students go first. And often it's been framed as students, we know you've got to study, go to class. The next day, we do want to hear from you. So regardless of where we are and are in the agenda, students come up to the podium now to speak on any item. If you could comment legally on those two items.
Thank you. Okay. So in terms of organizing the queue by agenda item, that is appropriate because you are not filtering things out based on viewpoint. In other words, you are looking to see where is this comment going to be most applicable in the agenda? And that is guided by the commenter themselves in terms of what they want to speak to. So that is not a potentially illegal viewpoint choosing process. In terms of the preference for students, again, it's not going to viewpoint preference that you are trying to get more student viewpoints to the detriment of not hearing from other taxpayers, parents, et cetera. But you also have to acknowledge that if you overdo that and it stops the ability for the other members of your community to speak, then you're going to have some pushback on that. So that's not so much a legal issue as it is the practical reality that if you've got 30 students there and you're going to prioritize that all 30 students get to speak first, and that somehow limits the 30 other people there. I think there's going to be some pushback. So my question then goes back to you. When you know you have 90 comments and you're limited to your 20 minutes or 30 minutes total, how do you organize that? Is it first come, first served at the meeting? Which blue cards come to your hands first? Or how does that happen?
Superintendent Posey, you want to answer? Would you like me to?
You're muted.
Oh my gosh. Sorry about that. Just reflecting on five years of observation of the different presidents down the horseshoe. The cards come in frequently just in a pile, right? Then from multiple people over a course of 10, 15 minutes and sometimes during the meeting. So they just get, you know, organized as they do generally by agenda item. So there is more of a date, timestamp queue when people are notifying us by email. And then in a general blue card meeting, doesn't usually matter unless we have a very large number of comments that exceed the amount of time the board wishes to allocate to a particular agenda items, public comment, period.
And John, I would add that in the almost 10 years I've been regularly attending board meetings, when there are, when we were in person, usually what will happen if there's a lot of comments from one item is we would decrease the amount of time for public comments. It might be only two minutes or one minutes. But I can't think of a time where we haven't read comments because we didn't read some portion of the comment or didn't allow the person to have, have some comment through time.
Okay. Thank you, Matt. That's helpful because that is a reasonable legal approach to handling an excess number of comments. And therefore you also would be able to prioritize students, especially if it's later in the evening and you're trying to get them out on a school night. But again, as legal counsel, I simply caution, if anybody is going through and determining based on subject matter or point of view, who gets to speak? That would be a problem.
Thank you. Trustees, other comments, preferences, thoughts on this? And again, student trustees, please feel free to comment as well.
Well, so I think that that's not, that's something that we also haven't discussed on there, that the overall allocation of time for one particular agenda item, does that factor into any of these options?
Yeah, it's a, it's a, it's a point we should take up. Thank you, trustee Asmussen. You know, so the board policy, obviously, we all know what else is, you know, we can limit discussion, any given item to, to 20 minutes. Our last several meetings, you know, we've had an item that's gone well in excess of an hour of, of comment. The board policy also, as we know, states, you know, that each person has three minutes. But, you know, we can collectively agree to, to shift that. I do think if we look at, I haven't done a predator of our comments, but if you look at them, a lot of them are, you know, in the sort of one to two-minute range. We certainly do get some that are three minutes and well in excess of three minutes. But a lot of them, you know, we could take a, we could do a numerical assessment. I think the, the majority of them, if not the vast majority, are two minutes or less. So, you know, one way to, to make sure that everybody gets, you know, their, a point of view expressed, but also try to, you know, keep the meetings from, you know, not running until 1:00 AM, you know, would be to, we have the option to have a conversation about shortening the length of time for an individual comment in a situation where we have a lot of comments.
Yeah. And it seems to me like option two would give us the most flexibility there if we find that we are up against an allocation of minutes for our particular agenda items.
One item I'd like to raise about the board policy, and it's a suggestion for an amendment. We could also bring this up with the board policy subcommittee, but we're speaking about it here now. And it would maybe align the policy better with our practice. The board policy says individual speakers shall be allowed three minutes to address the board. If that was changed to a May, that would allow the board in real time to say, oh my gosh, we've got 60 commenters. We do want to hear from them all. Instead of three minutes, everybody gets two minutes. So changing that shall to a May would provide the board the flexibility to reflect the practice map described over the last decade.
And I can.
Go ahead, Eve.
I concur with that from a legal perspective. The Brown Act itself does not require three minutes per person. That's something that has been put in your bylaw and you do have the ability to go through the process to alter that appropriately.
Yeah. And just as a, for context, the city's limit is two minutes, unless you have multiple people as part of it, and then they will extend it. But their, their, their agenda items, they, they typically allow two minutes for comment.
Joe, if I could add one more thing. The next sentence on the board policy, it really states the only limit we can put. And it says the board may limit the total time for public input on each item to 20 minutes. So right now, we, the only way we can manage the clock and public comment is the total amount of time, not per speaker. And in the past, I have asked in a live setting, I can say, you know, I have 30 cards up here. You know, if all of you speak three minutes, that's going to be an hour and a half. Can you just be brief and let us know your position?
Yeah.
People are very, are often willing to comply with that. But right now, our board policy only hands us in on, or we only have one option of limiting public comment. And that's 20 minutes as opposed, and that then would, to my fear, right now, our current one doesn't allow us to allow for more participants via shorter time.
Right. Yep.
So just on implementing one of the options, I'm just trying to make sure I understand. So on, for option two, so I just confirm, we're still get public, we'll still get comments to read ourselves that say, that don't say public comment. That's, that's never going away, right?
Correct.
Okay. And then on number two, would it be possible to modify it such that someone could indicate whether they want the comment read for them?
So is your question, could we both have live callers? And secondarily, still have staff read comments for somebody who didn't want to call it?
If indicated. And, and that way, if, if the meetings do run long, et cetera, someone might, it's just, just to not miss a comment. It's one backdoor to not miss a comment if, if the meeting was too long. So.
Okay. Thank you, trustee Hyder. Other, other comments? Trustee Adams?
So my question to then Eve is, would we have to? I mean, is there any problem with that legally?
Which that are you talking about?
Yeah.
Talking like an attorney.
The big important one. But so here's it is, you know, if we give people the option of either doing it live or having it read, is there, do we fall into a problem of inconsistency in terms of practice? And two, if we, if we start to do the reading of it in this situation, then are we committing ourselves to reading it in, in future in-person meetings?
Okay. So I do not see any legal issues with what you're saying. In other words, whether or not the board reads somebody's comment for them, or whether or not that comment is read by the individual themselves or spoken by the individual themselves, that does not have any legal implications under the Brown Act or even particularly under your bylaws. I think you are raising a practical issue of precedent. And again, my understanding, just in dealing with school districts for a couple of decades, is that an ebb and flow of different practices and procedures does not seem to be problematic from the public's perspective, up until the point that you have issues that perspectives are being filtered out or equity becomes an issue. If you put in a practice that is not equitably accessed, that could be an issue. So other than those things, I'm not seeing a legal concern with whether someone says, hey, could you read this for me, read this email for me, or can you play this recording of my voice? Or can I be live and saying my comments on that? So those are all practical issues you have to deal with in terms of staff time.
Okay. Thank you.
So let me ask trustees, back to the comment about, you know, the potential of mirroring what our colleagues are doing at the city council. You know, which again is the essentially a number four, where you leave an audio recording of a public comment that could be made anytime up until that agenda item is called for public comment. And then they also receive emails for public comment, although I, I don't know that they read all of those. So we, you know, shouldn't take that as a precedent. Is there any benefit in, in largely mirroring what they're doing or, or not?
Are you asking staff or us?
Oh, colleagues. Sorry. So you, trustee.
Thank you. I just want to be clear. I, I strongly appreciate hearing the public comment in the voice of the public commenters in the way they intend it and the tone and with everything about that person's message. In the way they intend it, in the tone and with um everything about that person's message that comes. That is lost of it, not not thanking our staff for their hard work, but that's lost it in that in that. So um. The idea that regarding the emails was just, um it seems like we have different ways that people want to reach out to us and email husband, what we've been doing. In practice during the entirety of the pandemic. So that's why I was thinking some some. Version. Um I would love it if the email had at least the uh a subject. The board item number under, I know, in the subject or something, so I knew this public comment for items such, so that there was no um. Staff having to figure it out or people having to figure that out and that to me would be very useful. But being able to incorporate audio recordings as much as possible. Again, I think it will be a better timeliness. And it will sound more genuine. So I don't know if your floor is open for us to make some kind of a motion, or if we want to talk more about some type of a um. Yes.
Yeah, um so uh trustee, uh trustee, the superintendent, both.
Well, just in terms of timeliness, option for the city model is the most onerous with regard to the investment of time. To manage the process. If uh option four is selected, uh we will need to invest more staff time. And managing public comment. There will be a monetary cost to that.
Yeah, the 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 uh the flip side of that superintendent, both, um you know, just going back to the Zoom bombing is, um it does, you know. I if you go to live audio, you do, you know, that there is some risk, so we'll have to have resources in place to be able to, you know, cut off if someone. Starts down the path that's just is and and and, you know, wonder, I mean, that technically could happen in chambers in a live meeting, but. You know, norms are such that historically it doesn't. Um and, you know, I I think people, you know, are more willing, you know, behind a digital facade to, you know, to 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 go off script. So I just want to make sure that we recognize if we go to, you know, to live audio, that we have to also be invested in being able to manage that.
Yeah, there is definitely a risk continuum. For these with the the visual being the most, you know, risky to audio and the safest, you know, being. Uh staff emails. Uh but with our current practice balanced against, I think, a clear interest, how can we uh hear the voice? Uh of the public, and that was the idea driving, you know, this item for today's agenda.
Ab- absolutely. It's just, you know, the city made the determination, and that's the one they made, that, you know, that the pre-recorded voice enabled them to be able to hear somebody's voice, but not have to. You know, not not risk, uh, you know, uh the the other side of the equation, the bad actors. And so I I I appreciate your point about it. We require additional staff resources. It's just, we'll. We'll need some if we do the live audio to be able to, you know, turn somebody's mic off, if you will, you know, right away if it's if it's going catawampus.
Um question. Is this a good time?
Of course, trustee.
There would be, with option two, there would be no anonymity, correct? I mean, as far as um coming on to the webinar, there's uh it it at least a login or or something.
That's correct. The the individual would have to indicate that they wanted to make a public comment, and then they would have to identify themselves. In the attendee population so that their mic could be turned on, or they could be promoted to a panelist for video and audio.
Let's ask Eve Fickner to comment on that, please.
Y- your bylaws are clear that they do not have to identify themselves as individuals. So um the process means that they may have a different, um you know, audience member number two is on their uh video. Feed or in their their um email. So you they do not have to identify who they are.
Okay, so so they would be selected to join the conference, but it doesn't necessarily reflect who. Who who is speaking, but there's there's. Right?
That's correct. And and that's what happened with the city council where people had fictitious names or whatever. Some of them were candidly offensive, but yes, that's.
Okay.
No way of verifying that, you know, it is in fact, yeah. Trustee Dara.
Do we have an estimate on the staff costs to implement um some version of option four?
Well, it would be a function of number of emails received. Let's say we, let's just say we receive for a meeting um forty emails. At three minutes each. Uh that's a hundred and twenty minutes just in time for staff to listen. Um and then the amount of time to, you know, organize those um as well. So with two hours of email, um I would say three to four hours of, you know. Total staff organization time, so probably looking at four to six hours uh times the hourly rate.
Yeah, and again, I think we're all uh in the same place, which is we'd all rather be in chambers and have anybody come up to the lectern and make a comment, and. That process tends to work pretty well, and we want to be accessible. To everybody in the community who wants to make a comment. We want to hear them, those that want to make it publicly and those that want to do it privately. So I think we're all in the same place. It's just how do we do this in a way that, you know, that 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 makes the most sense. So trustee Adams, you had a a point. Oh, I'm sorry. Yeah.
Yeah, I I I have more of a question for um. For Eve, if we do number four, and let's say we're always knocking off calls where we consider the language offensive. Meaning profanity. Do we run any legal risk there?
You have the ability to to have reasonable regulations about uh things such as decorum in the sense of you're not changing the message, you're changing the cuss words. Pornographic references that aren't applicable to the topic. You do have the ability, just like in the live setting. To keep order, and that would be the responsibility of the board president uh in order to do that. And typically, it's a warning. And that before somebody is kicked off the uh situation unless it's uh outrageous.
Right, okay.
And for those, I I don't mean to keep going back to this, and you know, I'm I hate the H-word, but hopefully we as a society are past this, but that city council meeting, it was, it was way beyond. Uh you know, lack of decorum. There were racial epithets. It was, it was pretty bad. It was, it was, it was the kind of language that, you know, we wouldn't be comfortable. It wasn't, you know, someone using strong language to emphasize a point. It was. Someone trying to get a rise out and, you know, say the most outrageous things I possibly could think of. At least that's my view of what they were doing.
So my comment on that as far as. But to your question, uh trustee, the value of a similar process between city and school, I I don't, I don't see it. Really, in my opinion, I think this this forum has become very comfortable in, you know, the parent world uh that we're primarily dealing with. Um so unless there's value there in some safety way or something that you're, you know, describing, and I would say. No, I don't see, I don't see the benefit. Just trying to answer your question directly.
Okay, thank you, trustee Hader. Trustee Dara.
Um if we were to try, or is it an option to try one of these methods for. Say, two or three meetings and see how it works, and then if it's um not fits, doesn't fit our needs or um has unintended consequences, then we revisit it? Is that a, is that an option, or are we making a decision now going forward for? However long.
Ms. Fickner, you have a point?
There's a point that I uh didn't address earlier that I think applies to a lot of this. No matter what you do. With these options, you need to give adequate notice to your public so they know what to expect. So no matter what you decide. They need to know ahead of time whether that's something that Maria is helping with a public uh notification system. It's also on your agenda. Your agenda is properly posted. You're getting the word out what these different things are. So to the extent you're going to try something out on a uh case-by-case basis for a while, just make sure your public knows. What's happening so that they can adequately access you to give you uh the information they want to give during uh the board meeting. And then the other issue is, if you're trying a bunch of different things, it's going a little bit outside of the board bylaw, board policy process. Where you make a decision as a group and it goes to the board policy subcommittee, and there's a process there for that. So you don't. You maybe don't have the same uh nimble ability uh to pick and choose things uh every couple months. It's just the reality of how the the governance system works.
And Eve, in your experience, when there's been a virtual meeting and somebody needs to be. You know, censored, whether it's, you know, turning the mic off or a beep button. Who does that? What, who have you observed handling that?
That has been the board president typically that handles that. But it doesn't, it, well, it's typically the board president that I've seen.
Yeah, and I believe in the uh, I feel so bad for my colleagues in city council meeting. We don't need to keep picking on this, but in that ill-fated meeting at the time. Brett Lee was mayor, and I believe Brett Lee in that context was was editing those comments, and he did it with real grace. Uh and dignity, but it was, you know, a challenge. So I think uh colleagues, there's, you know, there's no, the the, we all know the best answer is, let's get back into chambers. Let's have this virus be gone and, you know, let's. Get back to our normal order of business that will not take place for some indeterminate time. So we have uh, you know, two options in my view. One is we can keep the status quo. Which, as we know, is people email uh their public comments in and staff reads them on the appropriate agenda item. Um or we can modify what we're doing uh for one of these options or another option, but I think we're probably. Uh I don't want to stifle debate, but we may have exhausted uh rational conversation on this, and so. Um if there's a motion to make a change, I'm uh glad to entertain that. Uh if not, then I think de facto, we remain in the status quo.
Can I ask a question? Uh more about if we decide something today, would it um come back? Then would it be in effect in the next meeting? I sh- I should say the next regular meeting.
No, there would there, whatever option, uh well, let me, let's back up. The status quo, uh absolutely. It's what we're doing. Um I would feel a lot more comfortable with any option we choose, the February fourth meeting and part. So we can, through my superintendent constant contact through our website, through social media. Uh promote the new changes um and make sure we've done as much as we can within a reasonable timeframe to advertise for people. There's a new way to uh provide your public comment at our Board of Education meetings.
And then one question about the anonymity of the speaker. If under two, you have to email in order to get into the queue. To do a live audio, then we do have a, uh, do we double check to make sure that's a real email?
We haven't today.
I mean, I'm just saying for live audio, we would have, you know, usually. You know, you get an email these days, follow-up saying this confirming that you requested to be a speaker at. You know, such and such, please click here to confirm this is a real e- email. Is there any like that in place?
Well, let me ask Eve to comment legally. Um if somebody sent an anonymous email saying, I wish to remain anonymous, here is my public comment. You know, if we go with option. Two, um I I wish to log in anonymously and provide my comment. What's the legal? I I don't think we can prohibit that.
You cannot prohibit that. Um Tom, are you talking about like if it's some sort of um? Uh well, I guess I'm I'm trying to understand. Your question as to whether or not emails are sent when there isn't a. Live person behind it, like it's an automatic email sent out. I'm not sure exactly what you're referring to.
Well, if under option two, it says emails become the order for live audio, right? Okay, so you get a dozen emails of people saying, I want to public comment. Um first of all, we already have a traceable email address, so we could actually, if person does abuse their power. We can probably go back and say, you know what? You violated, you know, board bylaws about decorum. Right, and then we would always have the ability to manage that person. Um second of all, it would seem like because we know the email and it was a request, no one could actually remain anonymous. I mean, it may, there may not be a name listed on the audio. It might be just speaker number one or speaker number two. But it seems to me it's really hard to remain anonymous, right?
I I think the issue here is that what the bylaw is talking about is. The ability for a person to choose not to use their name or identify themselves. It is not a right to maintain anonymity per se that you're talking about. So. It's more of a choice and a decision, and in a live setting, uh you, they don't have the ability to walk up to the podium and remain completely anonymous. So. That's not, that's not the standard. The standard is that we can't require them to identify themselves.
Okay, all right. Okay, all right, thank you.
Thank you. Um so trustee Dara, you have a motion you'd like to make.
Yes, I move to uh you utilize public comment uh method four in the presentation.
Okay, thank you, trustee Dara. Uh do we have a second trustee Dara's motion?
I'll second that.
Okay, seconded by trustee Asmanson. Any additional discussion on this before I call for a roll call vote?
Sure, I I would like to acknowledge that there will be some cost to our district, but I feel like the investment from the district's part in some staff time. In order to have the voice of our community is worth the investment, particularly in the. Feeling that many people in the community have expressed of feeling a bit disconnected and disenfranchised. So um to me, it feels as though it's it's a appropriate cost, uh usage of our of our funds.
Okay, thank you, trustee Dara. Trustor Hider, you have a comment? Uh you're muted, trustee Hider.
I I feel like we still get the voice uh with using more current technology option two. Unless I'm misunderstanding, so emailing in and say that you want to use comment coming on to Zoom. We have controls. Uh I I believe that option, uh option two um offers the same benefits as four without. Necessarily the overhead, is my thought.
Thank you, trustee Hider. Trustee Asmanson.
I I feel like two and four are relatively similar. I think there is some benefit to having consistency across platforms.
Uh between us and this, in the city, uh trustee Asmanson, okay. Uh trustee Adams, did you want to weigh in?
Yeah, so um first of all, um. Look, I can live with uh any of these options. I I prefer option two because I consider that to be more. Similar to a a real meeting um and having actual live audio. I I don't think um. We will have the issues of of the city council, part because it's audio, not audiovisual. Um and also, I think um. I I just really, you know, if I, I really want to hear people live and have them be able to change their comments. The day of the meeting and not have to make a comment. Two or three days or the day before the meeting. I think it's, it's more genuine if it's live.
Okay, thank you, uh trustee Adams. Uh trustee, trustee Asmanson. A follow-up?
Additional clarification then on four. The way that the city currently does it is they have a, they have a set window for leaving audio recordings, correct?
Yeah, it's right up until the end of that agenda item. So there are people that do the uh audio recordings, um you know, while the items, you know, being called. you know, while the items, you know, being called.
But the, the window opens at a certain time as well. It's not a.
Yeah, and I don't know how, Ms. Clayton may know when they open the window. I know it's supposed to be at least the day of, but I.
I believe it's noon the day of the meeting.
Yeah. Yeah, because a part of their rationale in talking with them is some people can't make the meeting time. And so this gives them the opportunity to make a comment but not be in the meeting. And, and I would argue that our current process is a little challenging because we do want to hear people's voices. But the email allows people to, you know, not be in the meeting and still have their, you know, comment read. The, the audio does the same thing for the city council. Superintendent Bose, did you have a comment or question? I saw your hand raised, sorry.
Yes, just with whatever option and if the motion is approved, we will quickly get to work on analyzing if we can make a February 4th date, particularly on the city model, you know, and report back to that. So we just asked for some flexibility to make sure we've got the technical pieces in place. Very confident about that. So we can start our messaging and be reliant, we don't have, that we don't have to change our messaging because of a technical change or glitch down the road. So we just asked for some flexibility on that.
Sure, I, I think the motion as stated is, is clear and we can have as direction to staff as soon as practical. Okay, seeing, I don't want to stifle a comment, but if there is no others, then I would like to take a vote on, on the motion, which is that we move forward with public comment under option four. So we'll do it in alphabetical order. Trustee Adams?
No.
Trustee Asmanson?
I.
Trustee Dara? Was that an I, trustee Dara?
I, yes.
Sorry, trustee Hyder?
No.
And I vote I. So that is three in favor, two opposed, none abstaining. The motion passes. So now we'll move on to item five B, which is steps to return to campus update. So I will turn it back over to superintendent Bose.
Oh, there we go. Thank you, President Denunzio. All right. I want to thank and acknowledge our teachers and staff who have had to reimagine education as we know it over the last 10 months. And to our parents and other family members and friends who've had to put parts of their lives on hold to support their child's education while we've been in distance learning. And our steps to return to campus presentation is part of a series of very important meetings that we're holding right now on the conditions to return. And then next Thursday, looking at our elementary and secondary models. I do want to reemphasize it's very important we all continue to do our part individually and collectively to reduce community spread. And we have a terrific partner with UC Davis and the City of Davis. And I just again want to promote Healthy Davis Together and the free saliva COVID-19 testing for asymptomatic individuals as an important way that you can detect and we can combat the spread of the virus. The best way we can ensure the safety of children and staff and school is to reduce transmission in our community. It's a free program. You can go to the Mondavi or to the senior center right next to the district office. And encourage everybody to engage in regular testing. In the meantime, students are in distance learning. We're serving small cohorts of students with the highest needs on our campuses. And we continue to follow our roadmap to reopening. We prepare for a safe and successful return to campus. Next slide, please. As a reminder, currently DJ USD is in phase two of our return to campus plan, which includes a partial return of students with urgent needs. And under California Department of Health guidelines, we can continue to have small cohorts of students on campus, regardless of being in the purple tier and/or if under a stay at home order. Now, in order to move into phase three, which would provide the opportunity for all students to return back to campus in a hybrid model, Yolo County needs to be back in the red tier. Next slide, please. Brief update on where we are in our planning for a hybrid model return to school. And it's what we call the roadmap to phase three. We've moved steadily through this five-stage strategy since its launch on November 19th, beginning with data collection through our family and staff surveys, development of reopening criteria, action team model creation, model selection, and finally reopening actions. This work, of course, continues to be influenced by variables inside of our, within our control, such as making sure our campuses are safe and ready for an eventual return to campus and some outside of our control, particularly related to current infection rates, availability of vaccine and recent announcements by the governor about his new plan, which will be visited by the legislature. The most important aspect of this roadmap strategy is that it is inclusive, transparent, and a methodical process, which is particularly important so that we all understand the benefits, challenges, and trade-offs of the outcomes. This morning, we pick up our January 7th discussion about the conditions needed for a return to campus. Let me turn the next set of slides over to Associate Superintendent of Student Services Laura Juanitas for her update.
Great. Thank you, Dr. Bose. Good morning, trustees. I want to start by giving an overview of the state's tiered system, which shows.
Laura, can you please move your mic up?
Is that better?
Yep, perfect.
Thank you. State tier system shows what will remain in the purple tier as long as the county has more than seven new cases for per 100,000 in population or a test positivity rate of more than eight percent. We would move into the red tier if our new cases are four to seven per 100,000 or a five to eight positivity rate. To be in the orange tier, we have to only have one to 3.9 cases per 100,002 to 4.9% test positivity rate. And Yolo County has never been below the red tier since this system was enacted in August 2020. Next slide. The Yolo County graphic shows that our current adjusted case rate was 46.7 as of January 12th, and our test positivity rate was 11.7%. The graph also illustrates that Yolo County will remain in the purple tier until at least January 26th. Good news was the stay-at-home order was lifted on January 12th since the ICU capacity for the greater Sacramento area had improved to over 15%. Next slide. When reviewing additional Yolo County data from January 13th, we can see that we've had 9,500 cases in the county to date. The test positivity rate has improved over the past week from around 12% to its current 8.1%. And actually, the data reported yesterday showed that we had 151 new cases reported on the 15th, but the positivity rate had gone down to 6.8%. The daily test positivity rate graph shows a spike in the early spring, a low in June, and again in September, a steady increase in November and December, but currently we are showing a downward trend again. Next slide. I also want to share with you our infection data for DJ USD since July. And again, I have to remind everyone that these are self-reported cases of staff and students. And the staff cases are all lab confirmed cases. The student cases are made up of between actual lab confirmed or presumed positive based on a doctor's presumptive diagnosis. So to give you a snapshot of our active cases, we have 11 students currently quarantined, and these are students that would be attending cohorts or other student activities such as athletics. And we have eight staff members who are quarantined who had been coming onto campus for work. And now I'll hand this over to Deputy Superintendent Matt Best.
Thanks, Flora. So as you start to have your discussion today about conditions for reopening, and as we move into our discussions around a hybrid model, we wanted to sort of redraw your attention to the family and staff surveys that were conducted earlier this fall. The survey was conducted in late September. And in mid-October, you all received the board presentation from EMC and staff about the results. At that time, Yolo County was in the red tier. However, shortly after, numbers began to trend up and the county went into the purple tier in mid-November where it has remained since. As you can see, at that time, 40% of families wished to remain in distance learning, about 40%. And 40% desired a hybrid model and 22% wanted a full in-person model. Next slide. The next couple of slides refer to the factors that were important to families regarding reopening. For both families and staff surveys, the most important items were maintaining health and safety standards. In this case, in addition, training teachers, students, and staff regarding COVID are the most important aspects of reopening. And slightly less important, but, but still highly rated, were ensuring students have the opportunity to engage in person with one another, ensuring children stay with their teacher for the rest of the school year, and having students having the opportunity to engage in person with teachers and staff. Next slide. This is a continuation of the list of important factors for reopening. Highest rated was staggering pickup and drop offs and recess time, which are essentially efforts to reduce the number of students in a particular area at a particular time. And ensuring there's a limited number of students on campus and ensuring children stay with their current class cohort. Next slide. As a reminder, for the staff portion of the survey, staff was far less comfortable with students and students returning to campus and as a result, then returning for in-person instruction. As you can see, about 75%, we are somewhat are very uncomfortable returning to campus. And 25% were in that more comfortable range. Next slide. We asked staff similar questions to the parents regarding the factors related to reopening. Some of these are a little more specifically related to staff. And there's just less variability in terms of the staff response of importance. You could see there's a much larger list of things that are in that 6.0 or higher range, most related to social, the social distancing reality, how you manage safety and safety procedures, ventilation, all that sort of stuff. Next slide. And again, this is a continuation of those factors for staff. And you start to see a break into the fours when you're thinking about students having the opportunity to engage in person with each other, engage with teachers and staff, and, you know, the sort of phase in logistics that this change would happen. And now I will hand it back over to Superintendent Bose for the next slides.
Thank you both to Deputy Superintendent Best and Associate Superintendent of Student Support Services Juanitas. It's important we root our decisions in our values. And as we articulate what's important to us as we define the conditions for return to campus, let's spend a moment reviewing our DJ USD mission statement. It has been critical and central to providing direction and guiding our decision-making. The mission of the Davis Joint Unified School District, the leading center of educational innovation, is to ignite a love of learning and equip each student with the knowledge, skills, character, and well-being to thrive and contribute to an evolving and increasingly connected world through a system characterized by one, optimal conditions and environments for all students to learn; two, a team of talented, resourceful, and caring staff; third, transforming teaching, learning, and operations in our continuing pursuit of excellence; fourth, resourceful, transparent, and responsible fiscal planning; and fifth, a diverse and inclusive culture. Next slide, please. We all look forward to a time when we can greet all of our students back in classrooms. And since March, we've been thinking purposefully and strategically. Our actions have been rooted in our values and specifically in the six principles that have guided our decision-making process and our work. I want to remind us all that our guiding principles of equity, access, innovation, continuity, compatibility, and efficacy have served as a reliable anchor in our decision-making during the spring, summer, and fall. And they'll be of utility now as well. Next slide, please. The conditions for return to campus will have important implications for elementary and secondary hybrid model recommendations. It will be presented to the board this coming Thursday at our next regular meeting on Thursday, January 21st at 6:30 PM. It's clear that throughout our county, state, and city, country, state, and city, there are multiplicity of views about how we can best serve our students and staff in safe and secure learning environments. And we all have different ideas about what those conditions and circumstances should look like, how we can bridge those differing views and opinions and find consensus as a governance team for our community will allow us to chart a course forward. Staff looks forward to today's conversation and back to you, President Denunzio.
Thank you, Superintendent Bose. So before we go to trustee and student trustee comments, do we have any public comment on this item?
President Denunzio, we have 12 public comments on this item.
Okay.
Okay. First public comment reads, "Members of the board, you alone hold the power to allow our children to return to in-person schooling. Children that have been locked out of school for more than eight months and endured tremendous hardship in the process. Clearly, there are two factions dug in in their respective views that children should be allowed to return or they shouldn't be. One group is requesting an option for students and families to return to some form of in-person schooling. The other group, on the contrary, seeks to actively prevent children from returning to school, interacting with peers, teachers, and engaging in extracurricular activities. The group opposed to school opening is led by the teachers' union and their advocates. In the latest meeting, DTA President Diana Stromwell downplayed the social needs of children and indicated that reopening schools would not solve any problems. This view held by Diana and her union is consistent with CTA opposition to both AB-10 and Governor Newsom's Safe Schools for All Plan. A recent article from San Francisco Chronicle indicates that moving teachers to the front of the vaccine line may not be enough to reopen schools. It appears that unions will mandate zero to near-zero local cases and make egregious demands such as toilet modifications before consenting to come back to school. In summary, this anti-school group is stonewalling and has no interest in returning to in-person schooling this academic year and beyond. The pro-choice group, on the other hand, is a community-led coalition of parents advocating for the social, academic, and emotional needs of DJSD students and families. Unfortunately, this group has not been fairly represented in board meetings as evidenced by an obvious lack of live parent representation during reopening discussions and talks of omitting public comment. This group's request is simple: provide an in-person learning option when state and local conditions allow. The most disturbing part of the reopening proceedings may have been the recent cross-questioning of Yolo County Public Health Officer Dr. Amy Sisson, particularly by trustees Asmanson and Dara. If her expertise isn't sufficient, perhaps they shouldn't consider the advice of Dr. Fauci, the CDC, the UNICEF, WHO, along with data from schools thriving in our town, state, country, and across the world. Most recently, incoming Ed Secretary Dr. Cardona professed that, quote, "Our kids deserve better. History has its eyes on us," end quote. The question then arises, does the board's values align with the groups promoting indefinite school closure? Or does the board support safe in-person learning option for students? Your actions over the next few weeks will be telling."
Thirty seconds.
Bob Oldham, parent of two DJSD students, for now. The next public comment reads, "Hi, my name is Maddie Hayes. I'm a sophomore at DHS. I'm writing with regards to returning to partial in-person school this next quarter. I understand that teachers are doing the best they can right now as our students, but not all students can step into our shoes and know what it's really happening with the majority of us. While it's true that online school brings a lighter workload for us, that doesn't mean it's any less stressful or any more relaxing. So many of my peers, myself included, are struggling to find the motivation and focus to complete their work adequately. Students I know who got straight A's up until the pandemic are now getting Bs and Cs. Some of my classmates are managing the current situation better than others, but I know all of us are feeling the strain. Yes, we can stay in our pajamas all day. Yes, we can sleep in more, but we can't interact with our peers. We can't get as much help from our classmates and we feel like we can't really connect with our teachers either. I know many of my peers right now are feeling stressed, anxious and even depressed. Things are stressful for everyone, teachers and students. We're in a challenging, unprecedented situation right now. But if there's anything you can do to bring us some semblance of normalcy, even just being back at school fully protected for just a few days a week, I think we all could benefit from it. Thank you so much, Maddie Hayes." Our third comment reads, "Hello, my name is Nicole Shinstock and I'm currently a sophomore at DHS. I'm writing this email on behalf of the student body and the hope for hybrid schooling platform for the next quarter. I can see where the teachers are coming from when they speak toward the fact that they want to stay online because of the risk of being infected with COVID. I also recognize and appreciate their efforts made for us to have that they want to stay online, oh, sorry, that an amazing school year. One of the things we know you nor the teachers can do is walk a mile in our shoes, which at this point would be pretty helpful. Although it may seem like online school is fun and easy, but it's really the exact opposite. Every day is the same and it's hard to find the motivation to complete schoolwork, go out and get exercise or even just pay attention in class. Honestly, yes, I do get more sleep and yes, I do have fewer classes, but that doesn't make it any less stressful. Many of the friends and classmates I've talked to have less motivation and their grades have dropped. For example, they used to be straight A students and they've dropped to Bs, Cs and Ds. Almost every adult I talk to tell me that we are going to get through this together and that our mental health matters, but it all seems like a joke. During our Wednesday advisory period, we do a, quote, "mindful minute," unquote, which is great thought, but it doesn't really benefit us to have a minute of mindfulness once a week. It's that kind of thing that makes us think of this whole school year more as a joke. We constantly hear that you and your teachers are truly trying to help, that you realize that this is hard, but it really doesn't feel like it. It feels as if the teachers put themselves first. I personally constantly hear that it's really hard to grade assignments and that you give us fancy, difficult formats just to use just to make it easier for when there's absolutely no help or modifications on our side. We get to stay in pajamas all day, eat whenever we want, like chew gum in class and we can sleep in, so what's so bad about that? If you put so much effort into keeping our schooling going and making sure we are all safe during this time, why not put more effort into our mental health? The only people I interact with are my family members. I wake up every day, brush my teeth, eat breakfast and then get to my computer. After three and a half hours of school, I eat lunch, get back on my computer for one class and at least four hours of homework. Then I go out on a short bike ride, eat dinner, finish up some homework and then go to sleep.
Thirty seconds.
I do that five days a week and on the weekends. I do schoolwork, stay inside and try to figure out what else I can do with my time. My point is there's no motivation, there's no change, there's not really any social interaction and there's really no excitement anymore. I feel, and I know many of my peers feel as well, as if I have hybrid school platform would benefit us greatly. Some of the more academic advantages would be that we could actually interact with our teachers face-to-face and that we would be in a school environment which would help."
Okay, and the next public comment reads, "Dear Board Members, I listened through your most recent meeting on January seventh. I would like to offer a few observations. First, I would like to remind each board member that your role in serving the DJUSD Board is to represent the community as opposed to representing your personal opinions. The survey results have clearly indicated that the majority of parents and students would prefer to have some form of in-person learning on campus. You need to make sure the board's position reflects that of the community. I understand how tough it is to negotiate with the laborers' union, but that's what you have been elected to do. You have all been called to do the best thing for our students. Please take action. Second, when you hear different voices from the community, you need to separate emotions from facts. I can understand why one group of people are fearful of the community spread of COVID-19, the low ICU capacity and the seriousness of this disease. I can also understand why the other group are concerned about kids' physiological impacts from isolation as well as the extra burden on parents. However, all of these are emotions. Your judgment needs to be based on facts and facts only. So far, I have not heard a single fact connecting classroom teaching with community spread and infection to teachers. Instead, all I have heard so far is that numerous highly reputable reports have proved the safety of opening up school campuses and it's irrelevant to COVID spread. It's irrelevant to COVID spread. During the January seventh meeting, I heard one trustee make a comment that, quote, "Given where Yolo County is, I suppose it's safe to say that now is not a good time to talk about opening our schools," end quote. To that trustee, I would like to challenge whether there was any basis for that comment. If we can prove the irrelevance of campus learning to COVID spread, why can't we discuss the plan at this point? Why can't we open schools? I urge you all to focus on facts and not get distracted by feelings and emotions. Third, I ask that you don't fall into the false belief that keeping schools closed as the least resistant path is the best option for our schools. You really have to think through the long-term consequences of this decision on our students, our community and our schools. Listen to the voice from our own students. Listen to the majority of our parents. Remember how thin the margin was when the last parcel tax was passed. Try to imagine what will happen when the next time the Davis community has to vote for this. Try to imagine what will happen when your positions are up for election next time. Fourth, I would like you all to consider diversity." Thank you. And the next public comment reads, "School Board Members, the science repeatedly and increasingly shows very clearly that schools can be opened safely now with universal masking and distance as able. Davis has access to Healthy Davis Together free COVID testing that teachers and staff can access as often as they like. Governor Newsom has offered additional funds and resources to schools that want them. Why does DJUSD continue to delay opening? There is no logical reason. Why do DJUSD messages continue to go out that say, quote, "When it is safe to open," end quote? The science shows it is safe to open now. Please start messaging that to parents and teachers. Show that you believe in the science and will help educate the community and teachers about how to become school-safe, be in school safely now. Why, as district leaders, are you continuing to delay opening and pushing toward a hybrid option that is completely complicated and unnecessary when the science shows full in-person learning is safe now? Help us understand why, as parents, we should elect you when you aren't sending messages or making decisions that support the children and align with the science of COVID safety. The children are suffering needlessly. This article linked below is short but clearly explains the science and medical reasons for pushing toward a full school reopening now. It is supported by numerous medical experts. I urge and beg you to make the leadership decisions necessary to open schools now. It is most importantly the right thing to do for the kids, but also essential to restore community faith in DJUSD as a leader in factual decision-making and educational integrity. Respectfully, Heather Martin." And there is the link to the article referenced below. The next public comment reads, "Greetings, DJUSD Board of Education. I will keep this as brief as possible since I know you are receiving a lot of mail regarding the return to our school campuses. I am a parent of a DJUSD student and teach at one of our junior highs. My perspective as both a concerned parent and a concerned teacher is that I think it is worth considering. One aspect to all this that I never hear anyone bring up is that teachers simply will not be able to work if they are overly anxious and stressed out. In a recent meeting with teachers, paraeducators and student teachers, I heard extremely high levels of stress being reported. Attendees were in tears and/or close to tears as they shared how it is to be educators these days. Many of us shared what kinds of stressors we were dealing with within our families. Some of us have ill family members. Quite a few of us are taking care of our own children while providing supports to our parents. More than one person mentioned having panic attacks with greater frequency. We all agreed that we are spending an inordinate amount of time on screens and doing our absolute best to create the most engaging and meaningful content for our students. People who gravitate toward working with kids tend to be very emotionally sensitive. That is a strength in normal times. During a global pandemic, I suppose one could classify that emotional sensitivity as weakness, although I can find many reasons to disagree with that even now. My point is that no matter how much parents want their kids back at school, if teachers don't feel safe, they will not be able to teach. They will not be able to do their job effectively. Many will refuse to come back to campus and will opt for a leave of absence. That is not because teachers don't care or are not brave. Surely, Davis teachers are brave. We have continued to teach despite being in a culture that has done little, if anything, to address gun violence and school shootings. Not to mention, we teach in a community whose demographics eerily echo the shootings where the highest fatality attacks occur: suburban, wealthy and low minority. I bring all this up because as a teacher these days, I hear a lot of anger directed at us and our union. Teachers are tired of our work with children and our importance to children's lives and well-being never being prioritized in our country. The struggle has been a part of our reality a long time. Trying to effectively teach, inspire, grade and engage thirty-three students in a class at a time while colleagues in other states and countries do the same with twenty to twenty-four students has felt impossible to me and my colleagues for many years, but somehow we keep at it."
Thirty minutes.
Okay, thank you.
Our next public comment reads, "Dear Dr. Bose and DJSD Board Members, I'm writing as a teacher and employee of the Davis Joint Unified School District and as a parent of two children enrolled in the DJSD. I urge you to delay returning to normal classroom instruction until a COVID-19 vaccination is widely available to all the DJSD teachers, employees and students. I ask you to delay reopening the DJSD to normal classroom instruction based on, one, health concerns; two, the limited benefits to DJSD students; and three, instructional time concerns. My first concern is for my health, my immediate family's health and my extended family's health. Currently, my children do not leave the house to go to any stores. My husband and I go shopping only when necessary and we observe every health precaution that we can while we are out. In addition, we help his parents who are older and lack mobility with many of their needs. If DJSD returns to normal classroom operations before the vaccine is widely available, me, my children, my husband and our elderly parents will be at increased risk of COVID-19 infection. We have sacrificed by taking every precaution since March 2020 and it would be unwise to risk exposing myself and my family in this eleventh hour when the vaccine will be widely available soon. My second concern centers around the perceived benefits of opening before everyone is vaccinated. One of the main reasons for opening is our students' social and emotional well-being. Reopening will not help this on a few levels. If we reopen, students will be reshuffled to different teachers and different classrooms for just the few months remaining in this academic year. This will harm students' social and emotional well-being. We teachers work hard to create a sense of belonging and openness and trust in our classrooms. We've spent most of this academic year working tirelessly to foster an inclusive and supportive environment despite the challenges of remote learning. Suddenly sending children to other classes with a new group of students will be hard on the kids who have created these new social networks. In addition, I do not think students will gain emotional security being in a classroom where they'll have to wear a mask and remain six feet apart, especially in the context of an entirely new peer group and teacher for the few short months of this remaining academic year. Finally, teachers, including me, will have difficulty teaching effectively because we will not be able to work in small groups or observe students work closely because of the six-foot distance requirement. My third concern is regarding instructional time. Currently, my fifth-grade class receives instruction from 8:30 to 12:00 and then again from 12:30 to 1:00 with optional office hours afterward from 1:00 to 1:30. This totals four and one-half hours of instruction daily. If we reopen now, all students would receive significantly less instructional time and resource students would have less instructional time still. Because of these concerns, I found myself forced to conclude that I would need to keep my own children home for distance learning if DJSD was to return to the classroom instruction before a vaccine is widely available. I know this will cost both my children emotional connections with their teachers and classmates, but I also know the practical realities of returning to the classroom prematurely would mean that."
Three minutes.
The next public comment reads, "I have a daughter who is a junior at Da Vinci High School and she continues to suffer under distance learning. She is a naturally social person and also very competitive. Without the direct contact of her peers, she has become very unmotivated in her studies. This is a student that was getting straight A's and now is often struggling. For her sake and the sake of the education and mental health of all the children, I urge you to please open up the schools for in-person learning." Unsigned. The next email comes and reads, "Thank you so much for your work. Please consider these factors as you contemplate our fate over the next few months. Number one, the safety rubric for reopening must include the science-based elements of COVID-19 transmission, ventilation, checking each room for effectiveness of ventilation as well as the number of thirteen filters, masks that meet the highest standards and fit well, distancing, small pods, time in the schedule for ten or more minutes of empty room air clearing every hour, opportunity for outdoor teaching. Please cease highlighting the elements that are not evidence-based in the decision-making such as cleaning, frequent hand washing, which takes considerable amount of time, one sink per room, therefore extending the length of time a group is inside unnecessarily, any other hygiene theater." There are few to no documented cases of formite transmission in the ninety-four million cases in the world. And there's a source with three links. Number two, realistic messaging about what a safe return would actually be like for full vaccination. It will not be very social and there will be less contact time for most students. Teachers will teach less curriculum content due to the teaching and maintaining new routines, getting to know new students, forming new communities and needing to balance attention between online and in-person. The curriculum will also be disjointed for the many students in reshuffled classes. People who want to open cite many articles about districts opening. We teachers have friends in those districts, so we know that most of them feel that it is risking safety for very little return. In most cases, hybrid provides more detrimental situation to distance learning for all parties with confusing schedules, split attention, disrupted routines and whole families needing to quarantine when their child's exposed and/or brings home COVID-19. And there's another source linked. Number three, consider the evidence linked. That is, this can only safely be done with young children who are fifty percent less likely to get or transmit the disease. This means that until both adults and students are vaccinated with both shots and the wait time, in parentheses, six weeks total with Moderna and four with Pfizer, the students above adolescents, ten-ish, should not be in school at all. This becomes even more important in light of the high level of community transmission, highly impacted hospitals and a new, more contagious strain." With another link. "We are entering into what I call an Orpheus moment. We are close. The world is in sight. The wide world is in sight. We have sacrificed considerably for many months. Please don't throw away that sacrifice with a lack of faith in epidemiological evidence by asking me to risk my health and that of my sixteen-year-old child for a few months of less effective instruction accompanied by six-foot socializing. Let's hang on and give the new federal administration a chance to streamline vaccines."
All right, and the next public comment reads, "Dear DJUSD School Board, I am a parent of a fourth and fifth grader in DJUSD. They miss school dearly. Homeschooling is becoming more difficult by the day. Distance learning wasn't working at all and I don't know what I'm going to do to help my kids learn this year. Please open schools as much as we can. Current data and research support elementary schools should be in-person. Experts such as Dr. Anthony Fauci say we should do everything we can to get the kids back in school. Our Yolo County Health Officer, Dr. Amy Sisson, reminded us at the last school board meeting that education is." At the last school board meeting that education is fundamental. Simple Google searches can confirm this. We need to prioritize in-person learning in a way that is clear. We recognize the importance of education for children. Schools across the world and the US are open like Dr. Sisson said at the last board meeting. Quote, schools. Have opened safely in California, end quote. We should not lag behind the rest of the state, country and the world on this matter. Our risk benefit analysis of this matter should most certainly be based on current data, research and recommendations of our public health. Policy experts. This is not political. If science supports the reopening of elementary schools and our experts do as well, they should be open. Of course, this is the context. This is in the context of meeting our standards set by the state and county and also it means providing the recommended safety measures at schools. A safe return to school for teachers has been demonstrated all across the country and world. I have submitted numerous research studies to this board showing the students transmit the virus to teachers at a rate of zero. No, this doesn't mean it's possible, it's, it isn't possible. Or that it hasn't happened, but it means we need to consider. That at least as a rare occurrence when analyzing the risk benefit of returning kids to school again. In the context of the settings explained in the research, which involve using precautions we've. Seen being taken in the US, research has shown an increasing risk of transmission depending on the age of the student. And as such, we should set policy that reflects science. We can open elementary schools. The students need the in-person education badly. Parents are concerned about teachers. Parents are concerned about our doctors, nurses and healthcare workers as well. Parents are also concerned about all of our essential employees currently going to work in the public every single day. Parents are also concerned about the deterioration of mental health of our kids. And we are concerned about their education. Teachers can go back to school safely. These are the words of our public policy experts, not mine. Please open schools as much as you can. Dr. Fauci has said that opening schools should be the default position. The next public comment reads, dear, good morning, school board trustees and district administration. First, I want to acknowledge the position you are in and send my appreciation as a teacher and parent in the district. I cannot imagine the weight on your shoulders knowing that your decisions from regarding the opening of classroom buildings. Could have on the community. I deeply appreciate the depth and nuance of your questions and commentary. Next, Laura and I are very proud to see our two kids learning a lot, enjoying their teachers and classes through the. Through this emergency slash crisis learning situation. Both love their teachers and love their classes. And at this point in the year, we can clearly see their growth and development. We think their teachers are doing a phenomenal job and we couldn't be more appreciative of their obvious. Above and beyond work and preparing materials, having wonderful lessons and in a heartwarming way they work with the kids. We don't all typically get an inside view of the classroom like this. And it has been a treat to get to be a bit of a fly on the wall, if you will. Silver linings, right? Looking forward into the next months, it is hard to know when the conditions may actually be safe enough for us to all be in the classrooms. We are being told that we're about to head into the darkest time of the pandemic. And that we haven't quite seen the pink of the peak of the winter holiday gatherings. And that by March, the faster spreading strain of COVID will be the primary one affecting people. We also just learned that the failure of the executive branch, which regards to vaccine supply. In that they straight up lied about having more vaccines and have no reserve right now leaves us with fur. A far longer timeline until staff. Vaccinations, less community vaccinations can happen with so much uncertainty lasting into the next months. I want to throw out there this food for thought. Are we wasting valuable time not focusing on how we will restart next year? While we are going back and forth with people that want to open the school buildings to all as soon as humanly possible, conditions and risk be damned. No, we want to keep saying, do we want to keep things in limbo, having settled hybrid? Having a settled hybrid concept or not. About whether it is safe to enter schools rather than looking towards how we can supplement our virtual learning processes now to get through the year. After all the amazing work. Has been done by the teachers, staff and administration of the school district to ensure we are giving the students the best education we can during the worst health crisis of this. That this country has seen in a hundred years, it is educationally. Is it educationally intelligent to have such a drastic change in setting, something that will likely create upheaval in so many people's lives? Teachers, staff and our families in the DJUSD so close to the end of the school year? By current conditions, stats, facts and trends and comments by Dr. Sisson locally, we are looking. Okay. And the next public comment reads. Dear esteemed board member, excuse me. Dear esteemed board and superintendent Bose, thank you for your hard work and conscientious dis. Discussion on reopening our schools. As both a parent and teacher in this community, I am extremely vested in the outcome. We all care deeply about the health, well-being and academic development of our children. This discussion about the criteria to return is directly about the welfare of students and families in our community. Please continue to support the families who cannot access distance learning. Please continue the small cohorts. For the safety and well-being of all students in our community. Please do not reopen until the vaccine is widely distributed. COVID cases are low, the community is. Masked all the time and we are safely in phase five of the reopening schools plan. Davis Joint Unified is student-centered and focused on equitably giving each student what they need. Hybrid models do not give equitable access to education either in elementary or secondary school. For at least four key reasons I want to ensure you consider. They do not give equal access to instruction, disrupt stability, risk gaps in instruction and risk exposure to the spread of COVID. In the Zoom in the Room model, students who are minority mode, who are the minority mode. Either distance or in the room will not receive the same quality instruction or have the same support as the majority mode of students. It is impossible for a teacher to be in two places at once. In the hybrid AM PM model or AABB days for students with distance learning academy. Students may lose their teacher. Families must understand that. The social emotional supports and classroom communities that teachers have worked so hard all year to build will be gone. Students may have to change teachers with a few months of school remaining. Stability and routine are key. To students' social emotional health and well-being and moving to a hybrid model in the remaining school year. Removes that stability and routine. Transitioning away from remote learning now also relies on a significant and unreasonable assumption that all classrooms are opening in the same place. This is not true nor should it be. Each classroom teacher tailors the instruction based on the students. Their students' needs at that moment. Students, if reshuffled, may have holes or gaps in instruction. Hybrid models that require resorting students at this time will deprive equitable access to education. Hybrid models offer less actual instruction time than what the students are receiving today in distance learning. As I have written to you before, the instruction my own children are receiving from their teachers at Birch Lane and Holmes is relevant, meaningful, engaging and differentiated to meet their needs. Beyond instruction, the board needs to communicate to families what happens when their children are exposed to an infection. Maria, you want me to get the last one?
I've got it. Last public comment reads, DJSD is the best school district in the state, in my opinion. It's why I moved here when my remote job allowed me to go anywhere else. Let's have DJSD continue to lead the state. Be the first to reopen, be the first to give low-income kids structure and lunch again. Be the first to let students grow interpersonally, be the first to try and get our students caught up. If students or teachers are concerned, let them stay home. If they want to go to school, let them. DJSD is the best around. Now show it. Reopen first and establish for the state how to successfully reopen. Thank you. Signed, Jeremy Taylor. And that is the final public comment.
Thank you both for for reading those, much appreciated. And thank you to everybody who sent in public comment. And also to those who sent in comment but did not designate it as public comment. Again, I want to emphasize, we as a board read all of your comments and we appreciate hearing from you. Okay, so I'm going to move to a discussion with trustees, but I'd like to start first. Again, not not putting you on the spot, but it's just great to hear a student voice. And we did hear from some students via those email comments. But I'd love to hear from our student representatives. So Ms. Ortega Nunes. You have thoughts on this topic? I know we've been talking about it a lot and maybe before, why I give you a moment to collect your thoughts. I want to thank both you and Mr. Lee. I knew you you signed up to do this and you made a big commitment. I'm not sure. Any of us realized how many meetings we would be having this year, but thank you both so much for your participation on this. This is a big ask of you. You have busy lives, a lot going on and we're very grateful to have you being part of our discussions. So Ms. Ortega Nunes, thoughts you'd like to share with us or questions you have for staff?
Yes, I do. I I looked at the slide, Ryan, and I noticed that there were eight staff members that tested positive for COVID. And I was wondering if any of those staff members were teachers?
Yes, in that list, there's been teachers and other DJUSD employees.
Okay, may I know, how big was the impact of having a teacher test positive for COVID?
It's always an impact because depending on how they're feeling, they may not be able to do their distance learning class. I can't speak to any specific cases because that's confidential, but anytime a teacher is. Tested positive, there is the obviously the chance that they are not well enough to teach.
Okay, yes, that is what I was worrying about if we went back to school and. About teachers testing positive for COVID because we are already moving at a really fast pace and. All the students need the their teacher's support and guidance during the time that we're in class. And I was worrying that if they got sick or weren't able to teach while they were sick, that we would. Go get behind because we wouldn't have that guidance from our teachers. And now for the students that have tested positive for COVID, were they excused from online classes?
Again, if a student is well enough to continue with their distance learning, we certainly encourage them, but when students aren't well enough, we make arrangements.
Okay, about that, if they needed, those students that actually were too sick to come back to school, I mean to go keep. Doing online classes, do they need more support to catch up in all of their classes?
It it depends based on the student, but we would definitely provide that as needed.
Okay, and also from my understanding, students would like to go back to school to be more active and to interact with. Other students and their teachers to help with their mental health, but are there other resources to help with that? Without taking the risk of going back to school without the vaccine and high rates of positive COVID tests?
Dr. Bose, do you want me to answer that or?
Thank you.
We are certainly working right now to see what we can do to expand co-curricular and extracurricular activities. Using, we're still, because we're in the purple tier, it has to be in a cohort model, so it has to be. Discrete groups, less than sixteen, and we have some athletic teams that are doing conditioning practices socially distanced. We're working with some other after-school clubs to also begin to be able to have some opportunities to interact in person as long as we're following all the. Health and safety guidelines. And then counselors definitely at the secondary level have already started again in kind of a cohort model. Meeting with small groups of students or individually on campus to provide support.
Okay, now I was just wondering how often like, how accessible are those resources to a lot of students that are feeling this way?
Every student has access to their counselors, so I would certainly encourage if you know of somebody or your friends know of somebody. Notify the school counselor because they are definitely available.
Okay, now to change the topic a little bit, I read the model, right? And I'm not sure, it's not that much about to do with the model, but I was wondering about, what was the plan to disinfect for each day? Because I wonder how long it will take to clean everything each day? And will bathrooms be an issue because well bathrooms are bathrooms? And I don't know if we can disinfect everything each time we go to the bathroom. Yeah.
Sure, let me ask Matt Best to take your question, please.
And Mariana, are you talking about the the models that we're presenting on Thursday?
Yes, but I, yeah, about that.
Yeah, yeah, so so there's a couple of different things. At the secondary level, most of our custodial staff works in the afternoon and evening. So we expect that just just disinfection of a room takes between five and 10 minutes per class. And then, you know, there's the emptying of the trash cans and all the other vacuuming and those sorts of things, so. Currently, all that happens in the afternoon and and at night, like when we were in in person. And we expect with that current, the draft model that's out there now, that would be the case as well, that it would be after school and into the evening that. That rooms would be disinfected and cleaned. We are planning to do disinfection of high-touch areas. Each period, so door handles, you know, bathroom faucets, those sorts of things as we move through the day.
Okay, thank you. Yeah, that was my question. Thank you for answering.
Great, thank you. Are you sure? No, I don't want to rush you. If you have other questions, Ms. Ortega Nunes, please feel free.
I think I'm good right now. I will keep listening just in case.
Oh, just let me know. We're glad to come back to you if that would be helpful. Thank you. Mr. Lee, I know you're having some challenges with the microphone. Are you good to go now? If so, it'd be great to hear any questions or comments that you have.
Can you hear me now?
Yes.
Okay, cool. So yeah, thank you, Mr. Dantio. I just have one comment. To the students who took the time to submit a public comment and also to the students out there listening right now. You're right, it's true that online learning is much more difficult for us despite what many people might think. There's a lot less accountability for work and attendance and it's for sure a lot harder for us to stay motivated. Yeah, I know that the mindfulness advisory may seem a little bit ridiculous. Yes, sometimes it feels as if we're not properly understood. We're all feeling the strain that quarantine is putting on our mental health. We're circling access to friends, human connection, social environments. It's not for us all, myself included. But I think that's really easy for us to look at our own lives and demand that we return to in-person school. I think that the difficult part is remembering what's on the other side of the scale. When we ask to return to an in-person school setting, we're asking the community to minimize the concerns of countless families with older members. Some of which are sitting in a nearly packed ICU beside the beds of their dying parents and grandparents. As for me, I know that no matter how tough online school might be for me, I value the health and lives of my grandparents much more. I know that I'm not alone and that we all have someone at risk that we care deeply about. So I think that I know it's tough for us all, but as vaccines are coming out as we speak. And the prospects of returning to school seem relatively near. I urge you, let's just sit tight, pull through. And let's weather these tough times together for the sake of our communities elderly and sick.
Thank you very much for that, Mr. Lee. Really appreciate your comments and Ms. Ortega Nunes as well. Thank you. Okay, we'll move to comments, questions, discussion from our trustees. Let's start in alphabetical order with trustee Adams, please.
Well. Mr. Lee, just thank you for making those comments. It's. It's it's come, gets us down to the core issue here, right? This, we're in the midst of a pandemic and we're all trying to survive it as best as we can and. I want to thank you for centering us and just making. Us, remind us what's at stake for so many of us. You mentioned, you know, elderly, but we also have friends and family members who have compromised the immune systems because of. They're they're battling cancer or they're battling some other disease and so and we don't want to be. Have a role in in them. Losing that battle. And, you know, I I thought today would be, talk about, kind of get at our. Things that are kind of core and essential to us and it's definitely. For me, I just want to lay out there, you know, health and safety is is fundamental to all this, but it breaks down real quickly. Into two areas. Prevention of the disease, so no one gets COVID nineteen. As well as. as well as making sure we all, we all retain good mental health. And both of them are hard to maintain in this situation. And it's, and it's going to be hard to, to find that right balance, and it's going to, there'll be general patterns as well as individually specific needs in all this. So I just want everyone to be aware, that's what I'm trying to balance. Also, it's clear in the hybrid models, something we've always known about education, is the importance of connections. Students who have trouble have lost connection to their, with their school. And students who are connected to schools is because they have one, at least one trusted adult. And I think we're going to have to think about how we maintain that connection, because if we don't retain that connection, we will not have, we will lose our students. And so in that sense, that's something that I want to keep going, and that's going to be part of my thinking process and all this. And then I just want to say that underneath all this, we have to be ready to go into unconventional solutions. I've advocated outside resources, you know, we, the staff has been innovative, teachers have been innovative, students, you know, in that sense, we're going to, we're going to need that. But the biggest innovation we're going to need probably in all this is, is a timely vaccination. And that, if things improve after January 20th, which I think they will in terms of national administration and distribution, you know, that, that will be helpful, too. And lastly, I just want to put out there, we really have to start thinking of, when do we get to the point of diminishing returns in terms of going, switching over to a hybrid model? At what point do we just continue in this and find other solutions to address the academic needs and mental health needs of our staff, students, parents, that a new hybrid model can't address? And a, the continuation of a distance learning model can't address it? At what point do we have to get beyond the choices that we have here and start thinking in different ways? So that's, that's, I don't really have any comments or questions at this point, but I, I thought I would get that out there on the table.
Thank you, Trustee Adams, for sharing that. Trustee Asmanson, comments or questions or thoughts from you, please?
I also want to thank Mr. Lee for that statement. I think it is so important. I personally had a very dear colleague at my work die before Thanksgiving from COVID, younger than me, and very active person, and it is, you know, it is right here, and it's, it's important to be thinking about that, I think. So I appreciate that, Mr. Lee, that you brought that up. I also, again, just want to thank all of the public comments and appreciate all of the families and the teachers that have reached out and that have spoken. It's so important for every parent to advocate for their children. And from, from all of the viewpoints that we have heard from and that have spoken with, even those that are not read publicly. I also want to, as always, just really recognize how wonderful it is that we have this healthy Davis together. I did my weekly saliva testing this morning. It's so easy. It's so important. And it really just brings like a huge, my own social emotional welfare, you know, the knowing and the feeling a little bit safer and the knowing that I can take care of my community that way. In terms of the questions, on Slide four, we, you talked about the colored tier, and I was just wondering, is there a health equity positivity rate in addition to the positive rate that's associated with the colored tiers? I believe there is.
Yeah, let me ask Laura to comment on the equity metric.
Yeah, the health equity metric is something that is not, it's used to decide whether you can go into the purple or the red tier. So even if you have, let's say, less than seven new cases, less than 8% that would sort of put you in the red tier. But when they break it down by sectors of your community based on economics, if they find that you have a higher rate in the areas of your community that are more low income, that can keep you from moving tiers. So it's a little bit complicated. We haven't really seen it in action yet. But that's why the state is the one who decides when a county can actually move out of the tier. And they look at that also to make sure that you're not just testing your most affluent members in your community or only testing certain people. So for us, if our UC Davis testing made up a much higher percentage, that could throw off the health equity. I think we're doing widespread testing in our county, so I don't see that as an issue.
Because our, our health equity positivity is different from our general positivity in Yola County.
Yes, but they follow the regular adjusted case rate and positive. They only use the health equity when they're, like I said, when they're talking about moving from one tier to another. That's when it becomes important to look at.
And on Slide seven, you have the numbers that Ms. Ortega Nunes noted already about the 11 students actively quarantining and the eight staff. And what is the total that we're talking out of? That's out of, you know, the 200 or so students in cohorts, correct?
Yeah, we have around 200 students, maybe a little more by now, that have been invited to cohorts. And these are the ones that I would consider active cases. They can't be coming on our campuses. Or I also included in that number students who normally would be participating in our athletic conditioning, so they're a member of a team and can't come to practice.
Okay, so it's 11 out of, could you give me like a ballpark estimate of how many?
Maybe 300. There's probably about 100 athletes. Maybe a little more than that, but I would say 300 is a good ballpark.
Okay, thank you. One of the other comments that I want to make is, is the concern that I have that our students who are the most at risk academically are also often the most at risk medically. Therefore, they're not even really able to choose the in-person option as a cohort. We saw that when we reached out to our foster and unowned youth. We saw that. We've heard that from our Spanish-speaking families who, you know, they may have less stable access to healthcare, or they may be less able to quarantine because they are an hourly worker and can't take that time off. So I think it just brings to me that there are systemic issues that we, you know, that are, that are factors here. It's not really just a dichotomous choice, and not all of our students have the same access to all of the options. And there are trade-offs into where we put our time and effort into making sure that we're helping all of our students. You know, for me, the safety and the staff of our students and our staff and our families, the social emotional welfare of our students and our staff and our families is extremely important. The academics and that continuity, I think, is a big important piece of that in our, in our guiding principles. One of the things that, that sort of jumped out at me in our mission statement was where we say that we are committed to transforming teaching, learning, teaching and learning. And, you know, we've had to do this rapid innovation this year. And I think it's important to remember that education has never been perfect, and that, that again, you know, I always ask us to think about the positives that have happened here. That there are certainly, this is not what we want, and there are certainly things that we wish we could go back to. But I think it's also really important to remember the great innovations and the massive leaps forward that our teachers have had to do and that our students have had to do. Because one of the things that I hear the most in my conversations with teachers and with parents is the successes. That, you know, students have exceeded expectations in a lot of ways, and that they're making connections and that they are able to adapt, and they're able to do things that we wouldn't have necessarily expected them to do. I've seen it in my own household, not only with the kids, but also with, with the adults in my family that aren't teachers and that didn't necessarily have all the same teaching skills that I had coming into this a few months ago and seeing how much we've all sort of developed a really helpful and wonderful set of skills, I think. Not because we wanted to, but because we have been sort of forced to innovate here. So I just really want to recognize that as well, that one of the feelings that teachers always have is that we are never doing enough. And I think that a lot of people in our community are now also feeling that. It's probably also a feeling that parents have all the time, right? We always think like we could be doing something more, and we wish that we were doing something a little bit better. But I just want to make sure that we are taking the time to remember all of the really, really wonderful things that have happened and the growth that has happened and the skills that we have developed. And just remember that we are also doing a very good job, even though sometimes it doesn't feel like it, and it's not where we want to be, that there, you know, people are hanging in there and exceeding expectations.
Thank you, Trustee Asmanson. I appreciate it. Trustee Dara, comments and questions from you, please?
Sure, I want to echo thanking our student board members for sharing their perspectives and for grounding our conversation around sort of the wider community impacts of our decisions. Something that I have been contemplating a lot as we've heard public comment over these many weeks and I've had community conversations, and we've had our own, you know, organelles and discussions, is that the folks who, who students are suffering in distance learning, those who are unhappy and feeling disconnected. If our solution cannot be to get those students into school, which is what the community members and parents are asking for, I still hope we can find ways to help alleviate the situation the students are experiencing, whether it's lack of engagement in their schoolwork, whether it's difficulty learning from distance learning platforms, and acknowledging the isolation that students and, and the community at large is feeling at this time. So I hope that as we continue to discuss the options and the conditions for a potential return to school, at the same time as our students are experiencing their difficulties, that we have some of our time allowed to focus on the conditions of right now and what we can do because our mission really reflects on the happiness. Is one of the things that's mentioned when you look down under the board goals. But our, we want to have our students happy in school and have them thriving, and their social emotional well-being is very important. So I would really like to see what ways which we can.
Have we lost Trustee Dar? Or is it just me?
He has appeared to stop talking. I'm looking to see if she is still on the meeting.
Okay. Let's hold for a moment.
She's frozen.
Looks like she may have been bumped from the meeting.
Okay. Let's wait a moment, because I'd like her to be able to continue her, her thinking. I don't see the superintendent either.
Looks like we may have lost a number of individuals just then. We might need to take a, just a very brief break to let people sign back on. Let me see if they ended up in the attendees.
Okay. Why don't I suggest this? Let's take a, a, a five-minute recess. We will be back at 1:02. So let's take a five-minute recess to give people the opportunity to come back.
Apparently, Trustee Denzio, it sounds like the district office may have just lost internet.
Okay. All right, let's, let's give it, let's, we're taking a five-minute break, or we convene at 1:02 and assess where we are at that point.
All right, thank you, Joe.
Thank you, Trustee Adams.
John, you're back. Oh, no, he's not now.
I believe our district is back, but slowly coming back. Waiting for Laura and John, I believe.
There's Laura. Okay, good. I because I was unable to reach Bob and I was.
We've got a few people coming back and.
People are rejoining.
I'm gonna move John from the move him to the panel.
Let's see.
Is Leah back on?
I think you already mentioned.
We are getting reports that there is a um a power outage uh in uh in uh parts of Davis, uh including where uh trustee Dara is. Um, and so we're trying to reach her and to see if we can find a way to reconnect. Uh, it may take a few minutes, so I would like us to um to recess uh until one thirty. Ideally, we will be in a place where we'll have uh trustee Dara back at that point and we can continue the meeting. Um, so uh we stay in a recess until one thirty and we reconvene at that time.
Joe, let me know if you want us to try to help her connect by phone.
In the hotspot might be an option if she's got power on a laptop.
Good point.
Marcy, I let Leah know that you'll give her a call.
Will do.
Maria or Bo, do you want to pause the recording?
Thank you. Um, so thank you to everyone for patience. You may have heard apparently there was a an accident uh involving uh power and PG&E on Pole Line Road. Um, thank you to trustee Dar for being flexible and adaptable and finding another way in. So that's good. Um, so um, let's uh let's pick up where we were. So trustee Dara, thank you again for, you know, starting your comments. Um, but I want to give the floor back to you, please.
Uh, I was just wrapping up. Sorry. So I'm thank you.
Great. All right. Thank you. Um trustee Hyder, questions, comments, thoughts that you'd like to share, please?
Whoa, you guys. Let me, let me first ask a a process question. Um, so my my under, so my understanding is is that uh we were in start the discussion of conditions. So I'm just trying to figure out like, is this more for just laying groundwork so that we can get into more specific discussions on Tuesday or what have, where's the conditions discussion? Where are we, where are we going?
Um, well, trustee Hyder, you definitely should feel free to um ask any questions or make any statements you think will be helpful. Um, in terms of our process, um, the intent was that um, you know, we use this session. Obviously, we had the earlier agenda item we needed to address from the prior meeting um on public comment and then to use the remainder of this session to have this uh follow up conversation on elements around the return to campus. Particularly focused on conditions, but also including elements of the hybrid model and other uh things that you think are relevant. And then um, as you know, we have a a special meeting scheduled for Tuesday, the nineteenth, Tuesday evening. We'll have the opportunity and reflecting on this conversation to have a subsequent conversation um particularly focused on return to campus and conditions. But again, it's an open conversation. So trustee should feel free to raise issues they think are relevant to the conversation. And then, of course, on Thursday, the twenty first, at our next regularly scheduled meeting, staff will formally present options for a hybrid learning plan. And it's my anticipation, you know, dependent on uh where the trustees uh in that meeting want to go, they will have a conversation that will I don't know if it's fair to say wrap up, but certainly come to a conclusion in terms of uh likely to have a vote on what that plan is and what the path looks like going forward. But obviously, this is all fluid and dependent on what the majority of the trustees wish to do.
Okay, thank you. Um. Well, uh I guess it's best to share thoughts at at this point since um we're we're basically going to have a continuation on Tuesday. And it seems like, you know, we've been on a while and and that's what we've been doing. So I I will share my thoughts as well. You know, you guys uh esteemed colleagues, you guys are great and and I love you already and I don't even know, I've never even met someone in person. So um but I have to tell you, when I took this job, um I wanted to be part of a solution and um and I felt like I could help us lead uh to that place. And I honestly have to tell you that I don't feel like we're leading this um this board, it's a job is to um help direct the district in the values and the priorities and um the beliefs of this community. That is our job, and I do not feel like we are offering any guidance today to our staff to take away from this to help them either get children back in school or not get children back in school. Um. For to the comments of our community, I want to say that I struggle greatly with characterizations um of opposing views being wrong or right or being good or bad. Demonizing one view or the other. What I see when I read comments and I talk to my constituents, as all of you have done. Um, I hear loud voices from people who distance learning is not working for them. And and I empathize. And I hear those people not asking for everyone to do what they think is right. They're asking for options. They're simply asking for an option for what is not working for them. And while I felt like I had a voice around education for my own, I'm just here as a parent, not an educator. So I'm just here as a parent. I felt like I had something to add to that conversation. But our conversation in this situation is about safety. It's all about safety. And that is something I know nothing about. I don't know how to intelligently lead in the in this silo of safety. And it it clearly means different things to different people. Which leads back to the point that there's not a one size fits all solution. It's about options. Safety to some is just protecting the people that they love is Mr. Lee so intelligently articulated. But safety to others is smart management of our circumstances. When I look at what's being offered in expertise around safety, I see a state that is is encouraging its schools to open national resources stressing the fundamental need for learning and and our children being engaged in their normal job, which is learning. So not knowing anything about safety and following sort of what is going on this far into this pandemic with experts and resources and including our own county health officer. It's like we're moving the opposite direction. And that's uncomfortable for me because I don't have any justification for doing that other than fear. So my thoughts aren't very tangible today. My thoughts are we are missing an opportunity to lead. This is Davis. This is a great school system. And we're not leaving. We're buying time. And we're talking a lot, but leading is about making decisions, hard decisions. It's decisions. And a lot of process has been put into getting to the point of decisions. And for some, January twenty first felt like an eternity for it to get here. And for others, it it didn't. It it they're doing, they're doing their business and they want to know what's next. I think I think that having the the asymptomatic testing available here is just such a overlooked fact of the position that we are in to manage safety here. And given that we're talking about an option, people who don't feel safe don't have to come on site. And given people who do want to come on site have the tools to be to feel safe. I'm sorry, it just doesn't make any sense to me to to not acknowledge those two truths. Crisis management is about short term solutions and short term answers. Two months is a long time in a crisis. So I appeal to this board to make some hard decisions. It's a decision I believe, and I've been told this by multiple people, it'd be easier to know that we're not going to open now than to drag this out for another couple of months and to see what happens. I hear the concerns by all of you who educate about the efficacy of this transition. The continuity of this transition. We hear students saying we're not motivated to learn in the comments today. I will say this, if we need to change gears to do something to help motivate our students and it's not a hybrid model, then let's move very quickly to making a decision for what whatever whatever it is, either get on the hybrid, get off the hybrid, whatever we're going to do and move much more aggressively in innovation. Let's innovate. Let's let's help serve the best we can if if splitting i- if the teaching model isn't where we can do it. I think by continuing to advise as educators that distance learning is better for our students. There's just a a defaulted inference from that statement that it's working. That it's not imperative to take action. That this isn't an emergency. Not working for everybody. I don't want a tragedy to help to happen in this community because we just didn't want to make hard decisions. I'm ready to start talking about real decisions, real conditions. I'm ready to drop options that aren't going to work and move to ones that are. I just want to help lead our community through the rest of this school year, the best way we know how. And that's all I have.
Hey, thank you very much for that, trustee Hyder. We really appreciate you speaking from your heart and uh and speaking your truth. So grateful for that. And um, I need to think, I think we need to recognize, hopefully this doesn't come across as anything but, you know, candid is, you know, all of a sudden a situation that, you know, it's hard to imagine going back a couple of years, a school board would be presented with and, you know, certainly uh, you know, for the Tom and I had the benefit of of having a number of months of grappling with this. Um, you know, but the three of you have been, you know, seated. Uh, I think our first regular meeting was a month ago uh tomorrow. Um, and so the learning curve um and the voices and all the things that you're grappling with is it's it's amazing. Um, and you know, you're doing, in my view, again, hopefully this comes across the right way, is candidly exactly what you should be doing, which is grappling with this and and using your experience and your insights and your relationships in the community to you know, to express your views. So thank you for that. Um, so I've got a a couple of things and then um we can talk collectively about how we want to go uh forward. Um, first off, um, I I do want to make sure that all five of us and the four of you did. So I'm I'm going to be the fifth to do this uh to to thank Ms. Ortega, Nunez and Mr. Lee for their statements. Uh, I think it's important to recognize that uh student voice is critical to our ability to be an effective governance team. And so we appreciate the comments and students write in when we have the opportunity to do focus groups with them and then having our two student representatives. So um really uh incredibly beneficial for us uh as trustees to hear from the two of you. Also, on a, you know, uh, a more hopeful note, and yes, Matt Best, I did use the H word. Um, you know, it gives uh me uh a lot of confidence in the future of our, the leadership of our community and our nation that we have young people willing to make the commitment you're making, be as thoughtful as you are uh and be as engaged as you are. So thank you again uh from all five of us. Um, so I have a couple of um maybe more tactical questions for a moment. Um, going back to um to Ms. Juanita's. Um, so uh we talked about, and I know you're very actively involved on a regular basis with uh the the county uh and vaccinations. Um, and I know that recently one B is shifted a little bit with, at least it appears we're adding uh people sixty five and above. Um, uh, you know, trustee Adams mentioned a new administration, this new emphasis on really, you know, flooding the country with vaccinations. Is there any update you can provide us now or you you could provide to us um early next week on the likely availability of vaccines for, you know, to start for our teachers and staff? We know that, you know, juvenile vaccines are probably a little ways away, and we know the community broad scale deployment of communities probably a little ways away. But is is there any update on availability and when we'll be able to begin uh vaccinating our teachers and staff?
Yeah, I can a- answer a couple of things. So the rollout, at least through next week, is Yeah, I can answer a couple of things. So the rollout, at least through next week, is supposed to continue to be very slow. We've got a clinic planned at Harper on Saturday that they have enough vaccine for. At this point, the one plan for Sunday is tentative because they don't know if they'll have enough doses to even run the clinic. So it's continuing to be an issue and that's, those clinics are actually for healthcare providers. They're not for 1B, but if our staff volunteer, and I put the notice out yesterday and within two hours, we had over 150 staff members who wanted to volunteer next weekend. So we will continue to provide as many people to the county as we can. And if you volunteer at the clinic, you get vaccinated at the end of the day. So it's a way to get in a little bit early. The issue with the 1B is, as you know, it is a gigantic group of people. And I keep lobbying with the county that they put school personnel at the top of the 1B, not after all the other people. So again, I don't have control over that, but I continue to advocate. And as you heard last week, Dr. Sisson is, she wants schools to reopen. So I, you know, I feel confident that they're listening to that. But we're also telling our staff and we will be putting more of this information out to staff next week is to get on waiting lists because we are hearing that when there are extra doses, they don't want them to go to waste. So there are people that are not in the 1A tier who are able to get doses if they're on various waiting lists. So people should contact their healthcare provider, say, I can be there at a moment's notice. You can get your name on a list with the county, the same thing. So we'll keep advertising and we'll keep hosting as many clinics as we can with our volunteers so that we can get people vaccinated.
Well, I think it's a really important point. I appreciate, you know, the, the desire from the federal government, from the state government, the governor and the public health, you know, for us to, to move forward. You know, getting on my soapbox for a moment, feeling a little bit powerless, you know, it would be helpful to have the tools to do that and vaccines are an extraordinarily important tool in that. And it's more than a little frustrating that the locus of control for that is, you know, is beyond our, you know, our reach at the moment. So thank you for advocating. And I think it's incumbent upon all of us to advocate at the state level, state legislature, as well as the governor's office to prioritize vaccinating our teachers and staff as the highest priority. If we want to open schools, that is an extraordinarily important step to take. And I, and we are powerless. We do have a voice. And so thank you for, for being our voice at the county. Second question, maybe for you or I know Superintendent Bose is our representative in working with Healthy Davis together. You know, we, we, we are blessed with this asymptomatic testing capability. All of us, all the trustees and staff have been encouraging staff and community members to take advantage of this. I know they're still feeling like the Healthy Davis Together folks are feeling like we as a community are under leveraging that. Can you give us any update on the progress for moving to pilots and then having those testing available on our campuses?
Yes, I certainly can. Next Thursday and Friday, we are starting our pilots at Montgomery, Harper, Valley Oak and Patwin. So they will be, they'll spend a half day at each of those schools. So on Thursday and Friday, we'll hit all four of those schools. We are only testing staff the first week. We, we have to work out some logistics with the student waiver. Plus, we want to just make sure we've got all the logistics worked out. But our plan is to start with staff next week and then roll out another four campuses. If not the week after, then the very beginning of the following week. And then just keep every week rollout, you know, roll out four more until we can get at least our 13 campuses. King and DSIS and the district office can still go over to the senior center. So we're not thinking of opening on those sites. And then Fairfield's a little far out there, but
Yeah, okay.
We're working on it.
Okay. Thank you for that. And, you know, a question maybe for, for Dr. Boon Choi, as we think about, or, or, or Deputy Superintendent Best, as we think about things that we can do to engage our students in, in social emotional development, you know, so it's so important for them to be physically present with each other. And we have to balance that with, you know, the ongoing, right now in the purple, you know, requirements for cohorts. But even if we move out of that into a lighter shade of purple or hopefully in the not too distant future, red, you know, this need for continuing to maintain masks and six foot distancing. You know, are there, or is it something we can have an explicit conversation about next week around concrete steps we can take, no matter where we go with a hybrid plan to get as many students as we can, you know, together in a way that's safe and healthy for them and our staff, but really start to address, you know, some of the challenges that I think all families are, are experiencing. You know, I have two teenagers, you know, eighth graders and, you know, I can tell you we're, we're struggling. And a lot of it has to do with the things we've, you know, we've heard in comments. I, you know, I, I appreciate it. You know, I have empathy just in general, but I, you know, we're, we're living in our family as well. And so I know we've heard from some families, even a little bit can go a, a, a long way. Are are there some things you want to comment now? Or is that something you can bring back to us with thoughts at our next meeting? In, you know, a few days?
Sure. We actually took the commentary from the public health officer last board meeting and your sentiment as a board to get that, to get that rolling. We've, Laura and I have been meeting with principals and club and team advisors and some of the co-curricular staff to figure out where we can start some in-person activities as soon as possible. As you mentioned, it's significantly more difficult than the purple where we are now in terms of just the logistics of coordinating those kinds of events and the limits on how many people you can have in any given place, any given time. But we're, we're starting that discussion to see how we can make it work. And pairing that up with the coalition of the willing for students and staff. So we, we expect that we'll continue to move forward. Especially as we've got cohorts going, that's you know, particularly free to me up. I think we're spending quite a bit of time still on the COVID pilot. But looking to hand that over to Heidi Perry to lead. So I think that will free the both of us up because quite frankly, it does require our, our level of expertise and authority to make decisions about how those those clubs and groups may, may, may or may not be able to meet, given the current guidance. So.
Sure. Okay. Thank you for that, Deputy Superintendent Best. Okay. Well, it, you know, being nearly two o'clock on a Saturday and again, grateful for all the time that staff and my colleagues have put in on a, on a Saturday on this. I just want to end my comments and then we'll come back to everybody with a reminder that I think everybody has touched on, but I don't think we can say enough, which is we are one, we, we are one community. We all want the same thing. I said it a few days ago and, you know, I will continue to say it because I think it's important for us to hear it over and over again. We want the same things. We want success. Yes, happiness for, you know, and a, and a path to a fulfilling future for our students. We want them to feel engaged and healthy and safe. And we are committed as a community broadly defined and as a community of your governance team and the district staff and teachers and staff members to do that. And so I, I think it, it, we need to continue to remind ourselves that we all want the same things. And it's about how do we get there in a way that, that, that is what we're grappling with. All right. So I do want to provide an opportunity for trustees for having gone through, you know, a whole set of comments and and a power outage. You know, if there are additional comments or thoughts you want to share now, I think we can do that. And that includes the student trustees. And if there then are specific actions you'd like to take, the staff to take between now and our next meeting, or, you know, if there are specific actions you're proposing that we take, I'd like to hear those now. And so I think probably best would be to do this in, by calling in order. So we'll, we'll start with Trustee Adams.
Well, I think first of all, I just want to thank everyone, my colleagues and public comment for all that you said today. It is helpful to get together and discuss these things. And this is, this is probably the hardest thing for me to think about and make decisions about in my professional career and personal life in terms of making something like this. But I think we are also falling into a trap thinking this is a binary decision. That it's only distance learning or it's only the hybrid. And that one creates student supports and the other doesn't. I think we should help people understand what supports are going to be there for students, no matter if we remain in distance learning, just hypothetically, if we stay in the purple for a lot longer than anticipated. Or if we go to a hybrid model and whatever one we choose, we don't think that'll just solve all the issues that additional supports will have to be there. So in that sense, I, I think we're going to have to communicate that more and maybe bring it more into the forefront. We are doing a lot of things, but you know, I think, you know, as Betsy said, we are Davis, we're a leading district. So let's let's be more explicit about what kind of help we're going to provide for our students. And I think the other thing is I think we have to also take into account no matter what model we're gonna, we're, we're in, what are we going to do to improve instruction? And what will we do over the summer, regardless of what model we're going to be in? And thirdly, I think I think we better all just just assume nothing's going to go perfectly. And there are some things that are going to be good as we move forward, no matter what situation we find ourselves in. And let's extend some grace to ourselves and, and doing that. I mean, I'm always moved by the comments of parents and teachers. I mean, everybody is thinking about this and no one relishes the place we're in. But I think we should also really make people understand when we make a decision, it's not going to mean that we can't revisit it. And staff isn't looking at ways of continuous improvement. And by staff, I don't just simply mean the district staff. I mean, what we hear from teachers, what we hear from parents. You know, we, believe it or not, we have been on a path of continuous improvement since the pandemic started. And we'll continue that oper- operating that way. And, but I think we also have to give people a sense of confidence that no matter what course of action we take, we're going to be continuously improving improving and addressing the needs of our students, teachers and staff and parents.
Thank you, Trustee Adams. Trustee Asmson?
So, you know, I, I think that one of, again, the, the, the main principles that I'm really being guided by is that, that value of safety. We are in a pandemic and obviously that's what we are concerned about. And, you know, and, and one of the things that I heard Dr. Sisson say is that the risk is there. And what we are sort of making, and I think what she was sort of making was where we want to place our values on that risk versus reward spectrum. And while we certainly don't want a tragedy to happen because of social emotional welfare of students, we also certainly don't want a tragedy to happen because we have placed anybody at, at a health risk. So as Trustee Adams noted, you know, like we are in a not enviable position of a lot of not dichotomous choices. We have so many factors that are layering on top of each other and there's this spectrum of all of those choices and, and trying to figure out what the best thing is for an entire community is very difficult. We know that some students are not doing well and we know that some students are doing well. And we know that some people are just struggling along and, and figuring it out. And you know, just like when, when I'm in a classroom and I have to differentiate for a wide range of students, that's a, that's a difficult thing to do. And sometimes you can do it and sometimes you can't do it, but it's you know, differentiation on a wide scale is, is a, is a tricky thing. And that's what we're trying to do and, and what we're hoping to do on the best, to the best ability that we can. So just I guess echoing what we've already said, that, that it is not an easy decision, that there's lots of factors going in there, that it's not dichotomous. I really appreciate that there has already been this rapid innovation that, you know, Matt, that you've already started and Laura, that you've already started speaking with principals and club extracurriculars about what we can do. In the meantime, as we're sort of going through this process, because I also really want to acknowledge the importance of the process. When I speak with my colleagues in other districts, they are honestly where we were months ago. They are just asking their teachers what they want and how they feel. And I think that all of the input and the value and the thought that has gone into talking to our teachers and talking to our community members has been really important because our, our thoughts have evolved, not just because it feels like things are changing every single week. You know, we got a new 1B on Wednesday and we had different regulations before December 31st and we had different regulations a month ago, but also because we are getting deeper into the trade-offs. And that we are understanding what our trade-offs are and what they mean for each person and their specific situation. So I, I do still want to just really acknowledge the process and, and hope that we can be as innovative as possible, but I, I appreciate that we're getting all of the feedback and thinking about this in depth.
Great. Thank you, Trustee Asmson. Trustee Dar?
Thank you. I find that I at times find myself also feeling stuck between the importance of a really robust process that is slow just in order to get all the different stakeholders input and, you know, staff and just all these different perspectives and sort of playing out all the what ifs. And then, and then a feeling of wondering how much time is being expended on this? If in fact, it's not practical to go back to school, then should we be spending the same time on improving the experience of, of life in school for kids now? I really wanted to be clear that, you know, I've been working in education advocacy for a long time and been in schools across the state. And a lot of the social emotional issues our students are facing existed before the pandemic. There are specific issues related to isolation of the pandemic. But many, many districts down into elementary grades are seeing students having some very severe emotional issues, everything related to stress, trauma, all, all kinds of things, including in our own district. So I don't want us to think that even if we're able to get the students back into school in any, in any format, hybrid or whatever, that that's going to solve all the problems our students are experiencing. I think that that's a unrealistic expectation. Maybe for some students, if the main problem they have is not seeing their friends and not being in class next to teachers and friends, then sure, being in class might resolve that. But for some of our more significant and systemic issues of stress and ways in which students are suffering with trauma, I don't think that that's going to only be resolved by, by just getting them into a, a hybrid classroom. So I would like us to see as board members, us really focusing our work on improving the status of all of our students, no matter how they receive their education, DJUSD. And for me, that is a focus. I want, I, I, I will do what is right for the health and wellbeing of our community and I will have that be my guiding principle. But I just want it to be clear because I feel like there is this message or a belief from some that if we can just get kids back into school, I'll be fixed. And some components of life would be fixed. Kids would be in school and parents would be able to focus on work and life would go, would feel like it went back somewhat to life before. But I do not believe that that alone will resolve our situation. So I really applaud every effort that's being done to make it safer for students to gather in any way that they can, even if it's our small cohorts or any particular after-schooler activities that may be available. But I'm mindful that we are still in the purple and that does give us some pretty significant restrictions around gathering of any sort. So But I'm mindful that we are still in the purple and that does give us some pretty significant restrictions around gathering of any sort. So we are in an enviable spot, but we know, we knew we're getting into this, us new board members knew when we ran and that this is what was facing us. And I think, I hope that it's the belief of our community that we ran to serve our community as a whole. And I didn't run as the mom of a, of a junior in high school. I ran as a community member who's been there for a long time, who's worked beside our teachers and with our neighbors. And we played soccer and run and walked and grocery shopped all together for years. And these are the same people that we serve. So when I make my comments or attempt to get information for what's the best path forward, it's truly in a very holistic view of our community. And I just really hope that at some way, in some level, we can really start to focus on making our students happy wherever they are, getting them back to being happy and fulfilled and engaged and like lifelong learners. That's what I really believe. We could offer them as a gift from being in school and I hope we can get back to focusing on that. So, so thank you all.
Thank you for your comments, trustee Dar. Trustee Hyder.
Me again, Lord. I, I would just like, you know, I, I would like for us to quickly get to the decision making process with what we have in front of us. I very much honor the, the process that has happened and have encouraged everyone I've talked to to hang with the process. I think that's really important. What trustee Adams said is we can make a decision. It may be very imperfect. And that we can continue, we can try it and we can iterate and we can make it better. But any momentum to move forward with the criteria that we decide is progress. And I think it's time and I hope we do that. Thanks.
Okay, great. Thank you, trustee Hyder. Student trustees, you've hanged with us a long time on a Saturday afternoon. I can see from the window, it looks like a gorgeous Saturday afternoon. And I wanted to give you the opportunity to, if you so wish, to have kind of the final word for this afternoon. So, and if, if you've said your piece, that's fine, but I do want to give you the opportunity. So maybe we'll start with you, Ms. Ortega Nunez, any sort of wrap up thoughts or things you'd like to add to the conversation? And again, thank you for your, your focus and attention today.
Yes. Okay, so I'm going to brainstorm ideas to see if students that suffering with the mental health can do activities that might interact and help with that. And I will also try to create activities that we might be able to do as a school. But while being safe, so I will do my research today and I'm really excited to, hopefully I'll have more ideas and more interactive ideas for advisory as well. So I will do my best.
Thank you so much for that. It is very appreciated. Mr. Lee, any final thoughts or questions or things that you'd like to state, please?
Yeah, well, similar to Ms. Tane's saying, I think I'm going to be working together with some other people in the near future to see what we can do with mental health. But other than that, that's it for me. Thank you.
Great. Well, thank you to both of you and we are all stronger together. Okay, so I think we're at a point now where we've, you know, we've, we've maximized the impact of this conversation. So I'm going to move us on to wrap up this meeting to move to update on tentative board agenda. So do we have any public comments on the tentative board agenda calendar?
We have no public comment.
Okay, any trustee comments on the board calendar or any requests for items to be placed on a future board agenda?
I have one question. We have a meeting on Tuesday at six.
Correct. Yeah. I just announced that, trustee Adams.
Right.
You're stealing.
No, no, I, I, I just want to forewarn you, I'll probably be a few minutes late to that. I have a meeting from four to six. So I just need a couple of things to get together before I can join us at six. So I'll probably be five to 10 minutes late. Sorry about that.
No problem. All of the unfulfilled committee assignments that need to get filled, I believe the four of us can identify the most appropriate person to take those during those five to 10 minutes.
Yeah, okay. I take instructions better when it's written on papyrus with a quill.
Well, looking at my beard, what do you think the odds are that I have papyrus? Pretty good. That's how I learned when I went to school. Okay. We have digressed. So the next, the daytime and place of the next scheduled meeting, the next meeting of the Board of Education is scheduled for January 19, 2021. Board will open in open session at 6:00 PM immediately. Go to closed session. We anticipate open session will start at 6:30 PM on Tuesday, January 19. Consistent with shelter in place orders from the governor and Yolo County, this meeting is compliant with the governor's order N dash two nine dash two zero, which allows for a deviation of teleconference rules required by the Brown Act. And with that, oh, and in-person attendance will not be permitted. With that, we are adjourned. And I will see everyone on Tuesday. Please stay healthy and safe.
Thank you, Joe.
Thank you.